...of the school year, some kids are already done, others are wrapping up this week. And we have the honor tonight of bestowing two very meaningful awards to some very special people in our district. The first is the Judy Booley Perseverance in Action Award and will be presented by Superintendent Bean.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Thank you, Jeremy, for the wonderful welcome tonight. It is great to be here in the house that belongs to the entire community. Thank you for coming out tonight. And there's so many things to celebrate and celebrate learning and growth of our students. Tonight is also a special night as we honor some incredible people and those who have made a profound impact on our students, their colleagues, family, and the community. The first award this evening is called the Judy Booley Perseverance Award. Judy, are you with us here tonight? I've been in a couple -- there she is. Judy, if you would, would you come up and help congratulate our award winners tonight? Thank you, Judy, for being here. Please help me honor two recipients. Like so many of our staff members and counselors, the Judy Booley Perseverance Award, this was created in 2016 by the staff members at Central Woodlands 506 School to honor their counselor, Judy Booley. This award is presented annually to a Forest Hills Public School employee or this year group who, in the performance of their job, demonstrates positive personal and professional attributes, which have been shown by Judy, such as resiliency and perseverance. During the 2015-16 school year, Judy faced her personal and professional challenges on her road to physical and emotional recovery following a near fatal automobile accident. Yet through it all, Judy's strength, determination, and passion for her job and her students helped her rise above all these obstacles. Tonight, we would like to honor the 2023 recipients of the Judy Booley Perseverance Award. Tonight, we are announcing the Forest Hills Public Schools Transportation Team. If you work in transportation, our drivers, dispatchers, mechanics, personnel, and our Director of Transportation, Darryl Hofstra, please all come join me on the stage at this As you drive around our community, you know our drivers are busy at all hours of the day, and if you were at our -- after commencement ceremonies and our parties, you know they're busy all hours of the night as well. It's great to have so many of our team members here tonight. When asked, what is the most rewarding aspect of driving a school bus? Many drivers talk about kids and making a difference in kids' lives. And I know this as a proud father myself, the difference these drivers make in the lives of my kids and thousands of kids across our district. These individuals get to be an integral part of students' daily lives throughout the year, with some drivers driving the same route year after year after year. Drivers of the entire team make a positive impact on the lives of everyone around you. The role of a school bus driver is crucial, and most importantly, they are tasked with the vital responsibility of keeping children safe when traveling to and from school, to field trip destinations and back again, to athletic events, and so much more. It takes a great team to work together to overcome obstacles, and that at the time can seem insurmountable. During the pandemic, it was a weekly occurrence that unfortunately, we had to cancel over ten bus runs every week. Parents and community members rallied with our drivers and helped in every way that they could. And more specifically, our team was working diligently, but we still cannot fit the bus driver opening positions that we had. These drivers and so many others of their colleagues chipped in in every way they could in covering routes and making sure that they picked up a route that we didn't have a staff member for, so all of the community shared in this collective sacrifice. When the pandemic was over, our Transportation Department still needed assistance. Together with our community and families, they began the Transportation Advisory Committee to address transportation issues, routing, driver recruitment, and more. And together, we brainstormed, we tried new things, but we always kept student safety in the forefront. When we think of the word perseverance, our Transportation Team has perseverance and continues to do so. They continue to rise to achieve the best possible outcomes for our students despite difficulty or discouragement. They are unsung heroes. They are the first person a child sees to start their day and the last one they see before ending their school day. To hear a little bit more, let's take a closer look at the life and the life of a bus driver.
I personally am very impressed and appreciative of our Forest Hills Transportation Department because in the past four years, we have had the stronghold of making sure these kids are brought to and from school safely. They take those kids on these roads and they treat them like they're own, they're making sure they're taken care of, that they're safe, that they arrive happy. And it's just the bus drivers don't really get the acknowledgement, but it's all of the things that we do every single day. I imagine a elementary school bus would be hot, sweaty, loud, and my son would be happy, ready to go into the afternoon. She, if he's having a bad day in the morning, she always says hi, she always checks in on all the kids. She goes above and beyond to make every kid on the bus feel good. I'm the only parent that feels that way. There's lots of parents on our route that love her just as much.
When we have new students enroll in our building, which obviously happened quite a bit this year, we had a lot of new seventh graders enroll. And the being able to communicate with the Transportation Department to get bus routes figured out quickly, when they're trying to do that for, you know, X amount of buildings that we have within our district, they still were always super responsive to us and worked with us even if we got our students in a very short notice to be able to get them to school efficiently.
When our families join the school mid-year, there are a lot of variables that they are trying to juggle and a lot of pieces that they're concerned about coming together. And to be able to rely on transportation to help families get the kids to school safely and figure it out quickly has been incredibly helpful for our incoming families in this
Transportation Team, we are so grateful for your dedication, your commitment, your loyalty, and your professional service. And there is none other more deserving of this award than this team. Please help me in congratulating, but also thanking, our Transportation Team and this year's recipient of the Judy Booley Perseverance in Action Award, our Forest Hills Transportation Mr. Darryl Hofstra is the Director of the Department of Transportation for us. And Darryl, would you just say a few words? I know you frequently gush over this team that you know so well, but this is a wonderful group of people that helps thousands of kids in our community every day. Darryl, would you just a few words?
Thank you, Dan. I can't say enough about this team, especially even in the last few days. They have worked so hard. We have had drivers doing the job of two frequently in the last couple of weeks, and I cannot tell you how much, I cannot tell you guys how much I appreciate the hard work that you do. I truly deeply respect it. You know, I can't really take a lot of credit for this tonight, but I am so appreciative that this group received it. I've only been back with the Transportation Department since the 3rd of January this year, and it has been a delight, hard work, but a delight, and we are so appreciative of this award. You guys deserve it so much, and I am so proud of you. Thank you.
While Dan is saying his congratulations and thank yous to all the bus drivers, somebody handed me a little piece of paper earlier right before this meeting that let me know that each school year, about 6,000 students are transported every single day. Six thousand get to and from where they need to go. They do approximately 900 field trips during the school year, and they travel about 630,000 miles a year. And I was like, all right, that's kind of hard to wrap your mind around. So I looked at him like, all right, that's over 25 trips around the earth in a school year. So congratulations to the department for getting all of those kids all those many And our next honor is probably the highest award in our district. It's called the Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award. And here to explain the history and present this award is Mary Von.
Good evening. Tonight is one of our favorite nights of the year as we celebrate our Forest Hills community, our beloved retirees, our tireless, devoted, dedicated bus drivers, Transportation Department, and now another very special individual. The Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award honors those in our school community who have started a project of long-term benefit and/or have consistently demonstrated the district's guiding principles of respect, caring, collaboration, diversity, learning, trust, open communications, and high expectations over many years of service to our students, schools, and/or our community. This award is named for Ben Emden. He served our district in a variety of roles for nearly 40 years. Ben served Forest Hills in the 60s and 70s as a teacher, a principal, and a district business manager. From the early 80s through June of 2002, he served our district as a parent volunteer and school board member. During those years, Ben chaired or co-chaired every one of our district's village and bond elections, and every single one was successful, resulting in over $190 million in district improvements. He also served as president of this board for over five years. Upon Ben's retirement in 2002, the district introduced our highest award of recognition, the Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award. Tonight, the board will once again bestow this award on an incredibly deserving individual. I would like to invite Ben, if you would like, to come up and join me to help present tonight's Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award. So, Forest Hills has a deep history rooted in academic excellence and community engagement made possible through rich, sincere relationships between students, teachers, staff, and our community. Our history helps shape us and define us, but as a living, learning organization, we must also grow, change, and continue to improve. As an education system, we believe what Dr. Rita Pearson, a revered educator, has said: "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best that they can be possibly." Tonight, we are celebrating a true champion in education, one who has dedicated a significant part of his life to loving and serving Forest Hills, one whose true north star has always been doing what is best for kids. I would like to invite the 2023 recipient of the Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award to join me here at the podium, our very own Superintendent Dan Bean. You might have noticed he didn't know this was coming. And it's quite a team to make sure he was surprised because we know him, if he would have known, he never would have shown up. And this is very deserving, so bear with us, we have some really nice stuff to -- sorry. So, and it's kind of funny, a few years ago, we found ourselves entering into a pandemic and Dan started using the word nimble. So you get to be nimble tonight. So sort of adjust your course, and here we go. Not what you expected. In March, you announced your retirement. Tonight, we are celebrating your leadership, your 17 years of service as Superintendent of Forest Hills, and more than three decades of service to Michigan Public Schools. You are among the longest-serving public school superintendents in the nation and the longest-serving superintendent in West Michigan. Your 22 years of service as a superintendent makes you one of Michigan's most experienced and respected superintendents. Dan, you are highly sought after to comment on public school policy, leadership, government decisions, and you are held in high esteem among all your peers. In fact, your superintendent peers unanimously elected you as the president of the Kent County Superintendents Association this past fall. It's an inaugural year, tough time saying that. One of these peers said, once upon a time, "Dan is an innovator, a problem solver, a big-picture thinker, and a strong contributor to the greater good of public education within Kent ISD and the state. He is a leader among the superintendents in our Kent Intermediate Superintendent Association and is a leader among his peers at MASA, Michigan Association -- Michigan?"
Association of School Administrators.
School Administrators, sorry, acronyms. He served as Chair of the MASA Legislative Committee for 10 years and is a member of the MASA Council for 10 years. We now applaud his decision to capitalize on the relationships forged in these groups to collaborate with legislators and leaders around the state to ensure the best for all students in the state of Michigan. But there's more to Dan than his accolades or his curriculum vitae. His heart, passion, and dedication are unmatched. Seventeen years ago, Dan was happily and very successfully serving as the Superintendent of Carmen Ainsworth Schools on the other side of the state. This is the district that he called home, where he grew up. He claimed there were only two districts he would even consider moving for. Luckily, one of those was Forest Hills. As a matter of fact, it is common practice when interviewing potential superintendents to visit the finalists' districts. We only visited Carmen Ainsworth after final interviews, as Dan was the obvious choice. Your dedication and vision has led to athletes beyond measure for our district. With your leadership, our gifted teachers are preparing our kids for our 21st century world. And one of our revered -- I have this all over the place, I apologize. High school administrators once said, "As the environment of public education changes, it is extremely important to have a leader that has the ability to have a view from 5,000 feet, a leader that is able to creatively and expertly build and lead a team towards that vision, a leader that consistently places students' best interests at the center of all decisions." Dan Bean is that leader, and we are very lucky to have had him. Dan's vision has also led to you shepherding us through one of the most trying times in public education history. You had been with us for almost 15 years in 2020. We had definitely discussed retirement. Then, as fear became the norm, unknown was common, in the summer of 2020, you stayed the course. You led us through the pandemic and ensured Forest Hills kids had more in-person learning than any of Michigan's large public school districts. We are so grateful you supported our community through numerous challenges over these past few years. You have made a positive impact on hundreds of thousands of students, educators, community members, leaders, family members, and more. And you have made a positive impact, the best ever, in the lives of your family. You juggled a number of the traditional stressors when moving to Forest Hills: new job, marriage, moving across the state. I can remember still somebody stealing pipes out of the house that you're trying to sell on the other side of the state. But I'll tell you what, you talk about we're all about kids. Dan has 10,000 kids, but he has two very special ones, and I will never forget his relationship with his board when his wife was at one of our board meetings, and the twinkle in his eye, I knew they had come to tell us they were going to be parents. And that has been a very neat sort of governing factor in how he knows that everybody's kids are the most important prized possession we have, and that has governed his decision-making and his passion over all these years. You have poured your heart and soul into all of us, and for that, we are eternally grateful. You personify the Ben Emden Guiding Principles in Action Award. You always note the importance of the district's guiding principles and how they serve as the enduring values of Forest Hills, and you model them every day. Within months of your arrival, you had to advise our board of an issue with the staff, and you planned to address it, but you made it very clear as the new guide that every human being deserves to be treated with dignity. I will never forget that, and you haven't either. Learning, caring, and collaboration are three of the principles you always highlight with staff. You said, "The collaboration of thousands of caring educators and the generosity of our supportive families and community over the years form a winning combination for kids. This selfless team knows no bounds when it comes to helping our youth learn, grow, and thrive. The strength of Forest Hills can be found in the hearts of its people." Throughout Dan's tenure, the community supported three bond elections to help improve and enhance our schools and inspire students. Under his leadership, the district launched a K-12 Mandarin-Chinese immersion program, installed numerous project and problem-based learning opportunities like Onboarding, Forstem Academy, Project Next, and many, many more. Our graduation rate is at the highest level in the district's history, and we have increased the percentage of high school students enrolled in advanced placement courses. Through all of this, Dan has always led with what is best for students. His vision for them is to find the joy in learning and life and their happiness. Safety and success is his utmost priority. We lost a student years ago, and Dan wore a bracelet of support for that student for years. He cares about these kids like he cares for his own. Dan has created a legacy, and while we could spend hours, or I could, reminiscing and talking about accomplishments, there are a few other people who would like to say a few words about your leadership and service.
Dan has the ability to look at complex issues and sort of find what is the real issue. And that's unusual to have that much ability and that much insight into the human mind and into the psyche of the human being to really look at. So this is what we're hearing, but where's the real issue? I think that was one of his biggest strengths for us, was to help us navigate through the challenges. And there were challenges all along. The challenge is to really look at what is the core issue, and what's best for kids, what's best for our community.
But he also asks great questions. He's probably one of the most curious people I know, which I think is a trait of any great. You have to be curious, you have to be asking questions, not in a rosy way, but in just saying, "I want to understand this another way." That always made me better because I didn't want to do his office with an issue. I needed to have my act together. I couldn't go in there and just slant through it because I might know just a little bit more. Because I knew he'd always be asking questions. And again, not in a negative way, but in a, okay, we'll make sure we're all on, have you thought of this, and you're looking at this. And he just has that natural curiosity, it's just a natural thing, which I think is rare, but really nice to work for something like that.
I also appreciate you constantly pushing that as a community to work things out together. You have shown, over your 17 years, compassion and composure. You have shown the ability to show what civic discourse can and should look like, and I really appreciate that.
One of the things that always stands out the most to me is when he would come into a meeting or you'd have a casual conversation, and he would talk about his experience going to the schools, particularly with the super. When he would go and say, "If you ever want to fill your bucket, go to the school and spend time with kindergarten or students of any age." And I saw the energy that that brought to him coming into a room and spending time with students of all ages, learning about what they loved about their school and loved about their teachers. And I think that's emblematic of Dan is that his first priority from the day he got here, and I've known him since then, up until today, has been kids first and what can I do to support the staff.
Dan, thank you for your vision. I remember, oh, about 12 years of those stood on the stage on opening day and challenged all of us teachers to innovate. And so many of us took that and ran. You provided opportunities for us to innovate. We were excited, we were inspired, and our students have benefited in so many ways from that vision and that charge.
Dan, I'm delighted to be one of the people who is able to express my most heartfelt congratulations on your winning the Ben Emden Guiding Principles Award. No one could possibly be more deserving, and we're so proud and so excited for you. I'm also here to tell you thank you for your years of dedicated service to our Forest Hills Public Schools community. It has been an incredible gift and a treasure to work with you these many years. But I'm also going to be giving you a report card. And you know that I'm a really, really tough writer, so I have to share with you that I'm giving you three Cs, but don't worry, it's not the Cs that you might be expecting. It's a C for courage, for your courageous leadership, for being the kind of principal and center leader that we have always been able to depend on to make even tough decisions for these many years. It's also a C for connected, because as a true servant leader, you have been someone who has always connected on a deep and genuine level with our students and our teachers, with our principals, with your leadership team, members of your boards, and with the entire Forest Hills community. And finally, it's also a C for compassion, because you've always led with a genuine, caring heart and a love for the individuals that you have mentored and worked with over these years. So as a chartered member of your fan club, Dan, I'm here to say thank you and congratulations. We are all looking forward to the next exciting chapters of your career and your life, and we are looking forward to being a part of that. Our sincere thanks to you.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. I love you. Thank you, Dan. All of us kids really appreciate you, and you always have the best time with us, and I really love you.
So Dan, obviously, you are a servant leader, an educator, teacher, colleague, listener, doer, and friend. But most importantly, you're a son, a husband, and your most cherished title is Dan. So far, as our guiding principle of high expectations, we aspire to see you make every day of this next chapter your best day ever with all these people who love you. I've had the pleasure of helping hire you and serving with you for your entire tenure, so I might have to challenge Dr. Faust in chartering your fan club. But for now, it is my sincere honor to award you with the 2023 Ben Emden Guiding Principles
Well, Mary, you stinker, you really surprised me on this. I had a completely different plan, and I thought, oh my gosh, did one of our -- because I thought we have two awardees, neither of me, and I thought, she said one, I said, oh my gosh, did one not be able to make it? So, Mary, I'll have to get back with you some way. And thank you. You know, when I think of our guiding principles, they are a common thread that binds this community together, and it brings out the good that is in everyone. I am convinced to my core that every single person, regardless of your name, your title, your age, is here to do good in the world and wants to do good in the world. And our schools are a factory for goodness. That's what our staff members do each and every day. And Ben, these principles that are connected to your name help to guide us and re-guide us. As times as human beings, and I've been here many times, where I will ask a question or I may stray a little bit and not realize it, and the guiding principles are able to help me say, oh, here's the direction that we need to go. We aspire to them all the time. There are times in our daily moment where we may, they may be in the back of our mind, and then something brings them to front of our mind. So thank you, Ben, and the money and task force that set down these principles. They are timeless, and they have served me well, and I was not here at all during their Forest Hills is such a special community and such a special place for me. Some of you may know, when I came here, I was married one week. And I have to say to my best friend Valerie, who's here tonight, I couldn't have done this without you. Thank you, honey. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And before there were the guiding principles in my life, there were my parents. And I'm so fortunate to be raised in a family, my mom and dad raised four boys, and I was the youngest. And I learned a lot from my brothers, mainly what not to do, but I learned a tremendous amount from my mom and dad. And my mom is here with me tonight. And as I think of the incredible people who wear, as really an incredible badge of honor and courage and determination and hope, are all the people who work for this wonderful institution, Forest Hills Public Schools. I marvel at what you are able to bring out in kids across this community. One of our longtime principals, Dr. Sue Gutierrez, added up an estimate of the number of students over my time here, and she got, I think, above 17,000 different students over that time. And I think of the incredible growth that our teachers are able to bring out of our students. I've been sitting in your seats many times, watching this stage, and I will see students do things that they didn't know they could do, but their teachers did. And the confidence that that builds, the things that our students are out in the world doing, it's just a tremendous thing. And so, to be a part of that, I've always said, there's two jobs in the organization. There are people who serve students directly, like our incredible bus drivers tonight, like our teachers. And then there are people that have job two, and that's to support the people who do the first job, job one. And it's been the honor of my career to be in job two, supporting all the people that work with our students on the front lines each day. I am incredibly grateful for the members of the board, Dr. Foner, who was in charge of the search committee when I came to Forest Hills. And Jim, without you, I don't know where my life would have gone. But what I do know is these past 17 years have been a gift. And I am so honored to bring my 30-year career in public education to a close here in Forest Hills. It's because of everyone here and all of you that two of my greatest gifts in my life came from this time, and that's my two daughters, Zoe and Carly, who are here. Thank you, girls. And we aren't going anywhere. We want our girls to be in a great school system, and there's so many outstanding teachers and staff members and secretaries and bus drivers and school nurses and musical educators, you name it, they're here, and that's where we want them to be. So we will continue to cheer on not only our girls, but students all across this district and the incredible staff members, who I am so grateful for, who work with them every day. Just a final word, I want to say thank you to the members of the Board of Education and all the members of the Board of Education over the years that I've been so grateful to learn from and with. And I also want to have a big heartfelt thanks to a team of people that work tirelessly behind the scenes. They work twice the number of hours I do, and that's our administrative team. You know, when I first became an administrator, at the too-young age of 26, an outgoing, longtime principal, retired two weeks after I started, and he said, "Welcome to the world of administration." He said, "Your job is to make decisions, and just like an umpire, you won't get it right every time, but always have what's best for kids in your heart and do your best." And that's what I've tried to do. So thank you to my cabinet team, Christine, and Scott, and Julie, and former cabinet members like Linda Vanderjack, and Tim Raymer, and Gloria Graber, and Anna Edzinga, and Karen Lott, and Scott Korpak, and so many more, as I'm trying to recall all of them, and all of our principals and administrators throughout our schools. Thank you for all the tireless work that you do day in and day out. And just a last bit of words to our community. Superintendents always ask me, "Forest Hills seems like a special place. What makes your district special?" And I said, "Well, we've got great staff members," but I said, "We have a tremendously caring community. They are involved all the time." And it doesn't make it easy, but it shouldn't be easy. This is important work. The work we're doing for our nation's future is important work. And we won't always agree on the best way forward, but we can always agree that our kids are worth it. Our kids are worth the long meeting, or the extra conversation, or the extra phone call. And I hope we can be a model for other communities as we try to come together and work through differences of the day with the one common thing in mind, and that's always doing what's best for our kids. No matter what age we are, there's always a next generation that's coming forward, and that's what gives us all hope, and that's what makes this such a special place. So thank you, Forest Hills community. Thank you so much. I will treasure this. Well, that was a beautiful presentation, and I will not try to top it. Very, very well done. I will only say that, Dan, congratulations, and thank you so much for everything you've given to our students and our community over the last 17 years. It is very meaningful, and I say right from the bottom of my heart that I am honored to have my name associated with you on this award. And we wish you all the best in your future challenges, because I know you'll find something else cool to do. I have one other comment. To all the retirees in the room, I would like to personally, from the community, thank all of you for your years of work and commitment to our students and our community. Your work has been so meaningful, and I wish you a wonderful retirement. Actually, what I wish for you is that you will be as happy in retirement as I have been. And with that, it was great being here. See you next year.
Just a couple more words. We were supposed to clarify why there is still an unused statue up there. You know, understand, Dan covered that. And I also played with the math, Dr. Kuudderas did. You might have graduated close to 17,000 kids, but you've touched the lives of close to 25,000, and they are all over the place, making the world a better place, as we hear stories day after day after day. So we are very grateful to you, and we just want our community to know something on one of these pieces of paper, bear with me, cover that. In addition, your legacy will live on through a restricted fund established with our Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation. The goal of the scholarship, called the Future of Education Scholarship, will inspire the next generation of educators and will be presented to one senior from East for each Forest Hills High School who aspires to be a future educator. Thank you to our foundation for establishing this fund. Additional information is available in the lobby and will be communicated in the days, weeks, and months ahead. So, Dan, enjoy your retirement. Many times our superintendent, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Vail, Zoe, and Carly for being here. Thank you to Grandma Patty, Grandma Bean, and the two Mary Bean sister-in-laws for being here and supporting your wonderful family member. We will always cheer you on as you cheer on Forest Hills. Congratulations, Superintendent Bean.
That was absolutely lovely, and I am not going to add anything else, because that will maybe make me cry. Or maybe make him cry. Neither need be done. We do have one more recognition tonight that I know a lot of you are here to participate in and to watch. We have all of our retirees, all of the teachers and other staff members who have dedicated countless, countless hours to our students. And so we are going to honor them here tonight, and we will let Dan talk again.
Well, this really is the highlight of the evening, as we say thank you to an incredible, we call them sort of a graduating class in the spirit of commencement season, class with 764 years of service to our community that we are honoring tonight. And I will just say at the beginning, they're not all here. Some of them are already out enjoying their new chapter in their retirement. And so, we're able to have a portion of them with us tonight, and those who are not here, we are sending a resolution from the board that the board will be adopting to all of them, wherever they may be. So I'm going to call the first five names, I know these individuals are not with us here tonight, but we're doing this in order of service. And as I get to, I believe it's name number six, unless you're surprising me again, we have folks in attendance tonight, and we would love for you to come up onto the stage. And Dr. Fawson has a resolution for you, and the members of the board, if you just want to go right across, would love to extend their appreciation to you as well. So with that, again, I know the first few retirees are not here tonight. And the other thing I need to announce is, this is the total number of years of service to Forest Hills Public Schools. Many of these retirees have more public service, much more, throughout the state of Michigan. As our first individual, Todd Sharp, retired with just two years of service to Forest Hills as our Director of Transportation, but over 30 years to the students of the state of Michigan. So congratulations, Todd Sharp. And then also, David Lyon is retiring. David, with many years beyond 30 as an educator, but retiring for us as the principal of Thornapple Elementary School for the past five years. Congratulations to David. And then, next, we move into bus drivers. Karen Katz is retiring. Karen, with 11 years of service, we thank Karen and wish her well in her retirement. And then also, I saw her earlier this evening, I don't know if she's still here, or she's probably knowing her, preparing for class tomorrow. Jill McCullough is retiring from Eastern Middle School with 11 years of service as a teacher. We are so grateful. Jill, you are here. Jill, please come on up. I thought I saw you. Congratulations. Please come right around this board, Jill. Congratulations.
I wouldn't have missed this.
Oh, wonderful. I didn't think you would. I saw you earlier, but I didn't have you down here. This is.
I've been waiting for this.
We would. Thank you, Jill. Congratulations. A little known fact, Jill babysat me when I was a young, young Todd, so she's got all the goods on her.
He turned out okay.
Also, with 12 years of service, serving our community as a bus driver in the transportation department, please congratulate Kay Getchow. Kay, I don't think Kay is with us tonight, but we'll say congratulations anyways, because that's tough work. Congratulations, Kay. And I believe Claudia is with us here tonight. Please help me congratulate, retiring as a teacher, Claudia Ziderveen, with 13 years of service, retiring from Northern Hills Middle School. Here she comes, right back here. Claudia, congratulations. Again, so many of these staff members have additional time and service, and we're so grateful you're retiring with us. Thank you, Claudia. Congratulations. This next person couldn't be with us here tonight, but with 15 years of service, retiring from Pine Ridge Elementary School, help me congratulate Rebecca Roberts. Rebecca. And then, retiring with 15 years from Meadowbrook Elementary School, one of the people that any principal will tell you keeps the building running, we couldn't do without them, as a secretary and a registrar in our front office, Lisa Peabody, with 15 years of service. I know these next three individuals said they will be with us tonight, and we would love to celebrate with them in person. Retiring with 16 years of service from Central Woodlands 56 School as an outstanding teacher, Diane Pennycat. Diane, congratulations. I know Diane is going on to do great things at the international level in education, and the world's going to be a better place. Congratulations, Diane. With 16 years as well, retiring from Northern Trails 56 School, an outstanding teacher in our Mandarin immersion program, please help me congratulate Susan Gray. Susan. Retiring with 19 years of service from Northern High School, please help me in the English Language Arts Department, outstanding teacher, Jawed Abu-Lagad. Also, I don't think with us tonight, but please help me thank, for 19 years of service as an aide in so many different classrooms, and then even coming back and helping to substitute. If you think it's hard to find a substitute teacher, finding a substitute aide is a wonderful thing as well, and helping kids in so many different ways. Elizabeth Karassa. She retired earlier this year, but we're recognizing with all of our retirees tonight, from Central High School with 19 years of service as a teacher, Lori Ryan. Congratulations, Lori. And then another superstar from Central Woodlands 56 School with 21 years of service here in Forest Hills, outstanding teacher, Mrs. Melissa Smith. Mrs. Smith. I was at Central Woodlands this morning, and what a special place, in so many different ways of all of our schools. Congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you so much.
All right, making sure I don't lose my place, we don't want to miss anyone. With 21 years of service, retiring from Northern Trails 56 School as our wonderful childcare director, Nancy McManus. Nancy, congratulations. We are so fortunate to have an outstanding childcare program to help families before school, after school, in the summer, and our childcare team do such an outstanding job and such an important role. Congratulations, Nancy. We will miss you. She's not with us here tonight, but boy, she knows this stage so very well. With 22 years of service, retiring as an English Language Arts and Theater teacher from Central High School, help me congratulate Robin Demester. And also with 22 years of service, serving in our childcare program and also as a preschool aide at Ada Elementary. She's unable to be with us here tonight, but help me congratulate Diane Vandenberg. Congratulations, Diane. And I saw him earlier today. I don't know if he's still here or not. I hope he is. With 22 years of service as a teacher at our Flex Academy that helps our secondary students in so many different ways, who are out in the world doing so many different things, but still want a great education, help me congratulate Tom White. 22 years, Tom. And another member of the starting five at Central Woodlands 56 School with 24 years of service, outstanding work as a teacher, help me congratulate Jackie Turkot. Jackie. Again, Central Woodlands is a special Again, Central Woodlands is a special place. It's hard to believe, over 25 years, that that building's been turning out great things. And Jackie, thank you for being such a wonderful part of it all the way through. And I'm not sure, she was listed as a maybe, but she's not a maybe at all in all the work she's done for 24 years with kids as a bus driver. And my family's personally experienced her great work from the Transportation Department. Help congratulate Bev Vanderjack. And retiring from student services, but working in our schools, also as a head secretary with 24 years of service. Help me congratulate Sarah Elliott. Sarah, there she is. Our secretaries know so much about our schools and our staff and our students, and they help in so many different ways. It really should be magician of everything should be the title, really. Thank you so much, Sarah. Congratulations. All right, we're getting into the quarter-century mark here. With 25 years of service to Forest Hills Schools, and retiring from Nap Forest Elementary as a wonderful fifth-grade teacher, Emmy Conroy. And I know he can't be here tonight, but I have seen him just recently, and he's finishing up a wonderful career with 25 years of service as a teacher at Eastern Middle School. Help me congratulate Jim Cross. And also, with 25 years of service, she can't be with us here tonight, but boy, what a dynamic preschool instructor. We know how important preschool is. Retiring from Nap Forest Elementary, help me congratulate Mary Maisy. All right, on to the second page. With 25 years of service, an outstanding math teacher. I have learned a lot just by observing her mathematics teaching in her classroom at Central High School. Help me congratulate Tracy Will. And with 26 years as the childcare director at Ada Elementary, I'm not sure if she could be with us tonight, but help me congratulate Judy Gritter. Oh, I've also been in this gentleman's classroom, and I have learned, I thought I knew a little bit about chemistry, but boy, I have learned so much more about chemistry and about life. Help me congratulate an outstanding teacher. We will miss him from Central High School with 29 years of service, Dave Onair. Dave has launched out into the world countless doctors and scientists and researchers. It's an amazing, tremendous thing. He's also a beekeeper, I just learned from his students. And his students love spending time in his classroom. He's done great work with Venando Education Institute. Dave, congratulations. We will miss you so much. Oh, she's not with us here tonight, but boy, she's with us in spirit, and she loved this building here as her own and so many others throughout the district. Her 29 years of service, she retired as the head custodian here at the Fine Arts Center and the Community and Aquatic Center and the Administration Building. Help me thank and congratulate Lily Bush. And I just saw her again earlier today, again, part of that fab five from Central Woodlands 56 School, but with 32 years of students, helping kids have fun and learn in the process as a physical education teacher. Outstanding work, and boy, those kids are always moving there with a smile on their face. Thank you so much, Diane. Congratulations. Yeah, high school math for 23. That's right. I have to miss my own math there, Diane. Thank you. And with 32 years of service, teaching social studies at Northern High School, help me thank and congratulate Kirk Radevout. The Huskies are legendary, and the people they've put out into the world as well, in foreign service and legal areas and other things. Thank you, Mr. Radevout. Thanks for all your work and service. This next individual has served Forest Hills for 35 years, but again, like so many of these individuals, additional years to the children of Michigan. But with 35 years of service, and I believe 39 maybe in all of education, retiring from Eastern High School as the phenomenal director of bands, help me congratulate Paul Bolkins. I just learned recently, the students voted him in the yearbook as the funniest teacher, so I'm gonna find out more about all of that. Who knew? With 35 years of service, retiring from Northern Hills Middle School with our media program, help me congratulate Karen McDonald. Karen. Karen's wearing her Forest Hills necklace with the years of service. Thank you so much, Karen. Not sure if she can be here tonight. I know she is preparing. Students are nervous about her preparations for the exams that will start tomorrow, but she does a great job in her classroom. With 36 years of service, retiring from Central High School as a teacher of Spanish, help me thank Tammy Dykhouse. Mrs. Dykhouse, she is here. Again, another teacher that has launched literally thousands of students out into the world, prepared to make the world a smaller place by teaching them a second language. Tammy, thank you so much. Outstanding work. Finally, tonight, with four decades of service to our schools, a brilliant person, someone who has taught so many kids, but not in the traditional role as a classroom teacher. Someone who has taught me and has worked in many different buildings, but retiring as the incredible head custodian from Nap Forest Elementary. Help me congratulate with 40 years of service, Tim Personier. Well, 764 years of cumulative service to the Forest Hills community, and well over 800 years of service to the state of Michigan and to communities across our state. It's difficult to sum into words that amount of service and the incredible impact that all of these educators, regardless of what they do day-to-day for us, they're educators that help kids grow and learn. We are forever grateful. I'll say to all of our retirees, this place, these schools bear witness to your toil, to your sacrifice, to your gifts, your intellect, your care, and these will forever be home. So, wherever you go in these next chapters, know that you are always welcome back here at Forest Hills Public Schools. We want to hear from you, and I'm glad myself I'll be joining you in that chapter as well, and will love to fill people in that we have such a deep connection with, who will continue to be here, serving our students as we go forward. So, that concludes my portion. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Fawcett for this part of the agenda.
There is one more retiree that, he skipped his own name as he was reading the list of names, and I think after his dedicated 17 years of service to Forest Hills, he also deserves a congratulatory walk across the stage. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Congratulations to everyone who got awards and who are retiring at the end of this year. We thank you so much for all of your years of dedicated service. We are going to give you one little gift here of a recess, so that you don't have to try to sneak out of the rest of the board meeting. We will give a little break, so everybody can stretch their legs, and for those of you who would like to go begin enjoying your retirement, it can begin now. We'll be in 10 minutes. We'll be in 10 minutes. All right. We are going to make that official reconvene, this meeting. Since I didn't get to say my little spiel like I always do at the beginning of board meetings, I'm going to go ahead and do that now. No need to subject everybody else to that. So this is a meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 11. And I think before we start, since we're waiting for Mary to come back, I was going to say something about public comments a little bit later, but I'll just throw it in right now. Public comments, I just want to remind people, are supposed to be a means of bringing items to a board's attention that have not been resolved at lower levels. You've talked to the teacher, you've talked to the principal, you've talked to the coach, the athletic director, things like that. And things, you're just not getting any traction. People aren't listening to you. People aren't returning your phone calls or emails. There's some sort of a problem. Those are the types of things that should come to public comments. I mean, the Open Meetings Act, which offers and allows the public comments, it was established in Michigan here in like 1976, '77. So that was before we had email and cell phones and things like that that made it easy to get ahold of people. And back then, perhaps the only way you might be able to find your board member was at a board meeting. So that makes sense to have public comment for that. It's a little bit easier to go ahold of people now. But we still have the public comment. We love to hear from our community in any means, way, shape, or form that people would like to connect with us. But the intent is still the same, that the public comments are intended to make the board aware of things that have not been addressed through the usual channels, that they're not happening. It is not meant to be a debate of three minutes back and forth between audience members. In fact, public comments, I mean, we all know, we've said this before, public comments are a particularly bad way of interacting with the board because according to public comments, we just listen. There's no opportunity for us to interact with each other. We can't have a conversation. But in an effort to be very fair and transparent and clear and responsive with the public, we instituted the comment cards. And by the way, for tonight, the comment cards are on both sides of the doors over there. We know that they work well. People are getting feedback more quickly from the right person. And we've gotten good feedback from people about those comment cards. They also allow us to have a slightly more structured order and respect everyone's time, your time, our time, the staff's time that has to break down after the meeting, things like that. So with that said, we are going to continue using our comment cards and following the appropriate procedures. And the comment cards will be turned in at a certain time in the meeting. I will let everybody know what that time is. One thing that people mention is that if they hear something during public comments, they don't have a chance to respond to it then because they haven't filled out a card. Again, that's not what public comments are supposed to be for. They're not supposed to be, "I heard this thing and now I need to respond to it." It's supposed to be, "I have an issue that I need to bring before the board." And also, if you hear something in public comments and you're just like, "I need to let somebody know something about that," you can find a board member after the meeting. We're always hanging around. We're always able to talk to you. You can send us an email the next day. We're very responsive. We all have individual emails as well as a board email address. Or if it's not pressing and you want to, you can wait till the next month's meeting. I know change is difficult. We hadn't previously had the comment cards and we do now. We've had them for five or six months or so. But I think they're working well and as they intended. So like I said, I know change is difficult, but hopefully, everybody is able to embrace them. So with that, we are actually going to now move back. Thank you for indulging me on my comment cards. We are going to move on to our consent agenda.
Before we start our consent agenda, what do I do?
Do you want me to say?
Did that work? Could I please make a motion that we modify our agenda under Item 9 to add a Section A, move our existing Section A to B? And Section A will be the continuation of our discussion on interim and consideration that we were not able to adequately complete at our 6:30 meeting.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. We'll do a voice vote about moving the superintendent, the interim superintendent search discussion to this meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I say point of information?
Oh, yes, of course, of course.
Are you supposed to open after you second the vote? Open it up for discussion.
I apologize. You're right. Open it up for discussion. Does anybody have any discussion regarding?
I think we should move it to after the...
After the search firm?
Yes. I think after the search firm.
To talk about the interim?
After we talk about the search firm.
Hey, Holly, can I just ask why? Make it Item Number 10, right? Correct? Would it make it Item 10?
It's part of our superintendent search. It's definitely Item 9.
It would be part of 9 still. You're suggesting it be 9B instead of 9A.
And the reason I stuck it as A is because I would love to be considerate to our guest if she would like to move on. But Holly, if there's a good reason, go ahead. Why would you like to move it?
Well, I'm just, the reason why I want to move it is because I think we needed to just talk about...
We are.
Right. But I was, I think it would have been fair for us to talk about the grouping of the firms that were coming before we talk about it. But I, no, I'm just saying, talk about it. This, the interim would be talked about after we talk about and vote on which group that we would like, which firm we would like to go with. I'm just saying that's just, the order that we have, there is a paper that we did that we motioned to offer to vote on the firms tonight. And I know this was added on. Lastly, I just feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. That's just my opinion, that I think that we should move it to after we talk about the firms.
But we have to do the interim regardless of what search firm we decide on.
They're kind of, they're independent topics of each other, aren't they? I mean, they're the same topic, but they're independent discussions.
So Holly, if we do interim first, how will that affect our discussion of an interim? How do you see that playing?
Of a search firm.
I'm sorry. If we discuss the search firm first, how do you see that affecting the discussion of the interim?
Well, I think in all fairness, the transparency that we would give the public, that we promised them, because what was originally on the agenda was to talk about the search firms at the next meeting, and that's the proposal. And in doing so, each search firm that we actually interviewed with said that they would be happy to give us a list of an interim. And I feel like we kind of jumped the gun a little bit in doing so. And it's not, no offense to the person that's coming to interview tonight, that's not the point of it. I'm just saying that in retrospect of what was going on, I think we should be discussing the matters of the search firm who was willing to give us a list of candidates for the interim. And I understand that you guys have been working on this for two weeks and we just found out about it last week for the different candidates that were. And I think I would like to have, this is who we are being held, you know, if we're going to do a transparency process, that's, I think that's just the way the order it should go.
Because you're saying you want a different candidate for an interim.
I would like to have a list of candidates offered to us and not have a process that's slated for us. We have one person that is being presented to us right now. One.
I think though, that in all the education that we received, the interim process is much, much different than the official superintendent that will get hired after the search firm is hired. We don't have to go through the same steps.
But the search firm was willing to help us with that and keep us... I mean, it's a decision that all board members make, not the subcommittee. The subcommittee was supposed to be an advisory and bring stuff back to us. And we have one candidate that came back to us.
We have other candidates, but out of decency and respect to them, we said, "Let's go through one at a time. And if that is not deemed the appropriate candidate, we can reach out to somebody else." But we talked about not putting them on display and not doing the circus because that's not how the interim process runs. We tried to see if there's a fit with one person and if that's not a fit, then we can go to the second person. And when you say the search firms are willing to help us, we have the whole list of Michigan interims from MASB that we went through. And like I said, after that whole process of figuring out who was even interested or still even knew their name was on that list, six rose to the top. And that is the group that we kind of said, "Are you still interested?" Two still said no. One said only three or six months. One took another job. And that's how we end up in the position we're at.
Right.
So I don't, there's no other list out there. We have the list that search firms have of Michigan retired superintendents willing to be interim. So the search firms aren't going to bring anything different than we've already seen.
But I think what we should have done is not during, there should have been a blackout time where we have not contacted the people we were actually interviewing for the process of the superintendent search. I mean, we had four firms come forward. And then we asked one, because we're in association with them, to do some extra legwork without even voting on it. I mean, in a practice in a business world, that would be like four people bring in four proposals to him, we're deciding on which one. And meanwhile, on the side, we're asking somebody to help us out before we've even made a decision on it. I just think, I think we put the cart before the horse. And I would just ask that we would do it in the process, is to put it first, because that's what we were supposed to do, to keep transparency for the public. And then I don't think we should be at where we're at right now, but that's my opinion.
Also, in theory, we were going to be discussing this... Please be quiet, so we can have our meeting. Thank you. So we can, we were already going to have this discussion an hour and a half ago. It was already slated to be before the search firm process. So moving it into Slot A instead of Slot B isn't really changing the order in any way, shape, or form.
Because we would have already had it.
Because we would have already had this discussion.
No, I disagree, but we, I mean, we've had our discussion about it. I just disagree.
If it added transparency to this process, I would be in favor of that. I just don't see how moving it does any of that. I'm unclear how, again, I think it's a respectful thing to do for our guest who has already sat here for two hours now because we weren't able to finish our discussion prior, you know, that we could discuss and get to know her. Again, and this is how board subcommittees are appointed to operate, I think, is to do the work and present recommendations back to the full board, not to do all of the work and then have all seven people do all of the work again. I mean, following the guiding principle of trust amongst our team, I guess. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. I just don't think that changing the operations tonight add any type of transparency that you're wanting, if that makes sense, or if I'm seeing it wrong.
I think we have a motion on the table to put the superintendent's interim superintendent discussion in consideration as Item 9A and move the superintendent's search firm process to 9B. And we have a second. Yep. Is there, no further discussion?
Say again, the motion was to move the interim discussion to right now.
The interim discussion to Item 9A.
So, oh, right.
So during the superintendent's search item.
And Item 9B will be the discussion of the search firm.
So it's going to be at the end? Nine, not six? Item nine?
Nine.
So that's what it will be?
9A and 9B.
Okay, okay.
Under business.
Okay. So I think we need a vote. We didn't have a second. I'll second that. I think we had a second. We had a second and then went back to discussion. Okay, okay, we're good. After the discussion, we now have a motion and a second. So we're settled there.
We're good.
All right. Can we do a roll call vote then?
Yes. Dr. Mashad.
Yes.
Ms. Nymeier.
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer.
No.
Ms. Blonk.
Yes.
Ms. Koval.
Yes.
Mrs. Tryan, yes. Dr. Fawcett?
Yes.
Okay. And the agenda is so amended. Okay. We are now up to our consent grouping. Again, I know I just said the thing. If anybody has come in since we started, there's a reminder of the public comment cards are located on the sides if you would like to fill any out before we get to public comment section. May I please have a motion to consider the consent grouping?
I move we consider the consent. I move we consider the consent grouping.
I move that we consider agenda items six A through D. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, is there any, are there any items that a board member would like to pull out for special consideration?
Yes, I do. I'd like to pull out, first of all, I think I'm looking at it different on the consent grouping. I've got under B, business, number six and seven. So it's at under this one.
The music equipment and the piano?
Yes.
Those two items, okay.
I'd like to have those pulled out for separate vote.
Okay.
And I also would like to call out items number under B, under business, two, three, four, five, eight, and nine. And I just think I just have a basic question in regards to that and of that to be separated, as a separate vote as well.
So two, three, four, five, eight, and nine pulled out?
Correct.
And all of those together as one?
Hallie, do you just have questions, or do you want to have a separate vote on those?
Well, I have just one question in particular, is we haven't even talked about the budget for next year. And we're also bringing, the stuff is coming forward to us to approve for all of these item numbers, to purchase items for next year when we haven't even looked at the budget for next year. So we're like, we're preapproving purchases that we haven't even seen what the full budget looks like. I just think, you know, and I haven't been a part of this yet. We're coming into it mid-year. I know a lot of the things that we've purchased in the past, we're approving things that are already pre-purchased, but we're at that point right now where it's kind of before. And so I just think in some, in a sense, if we're going to vote on these things, we haven't even, we haven't even looked at the whole budget, to approve the whole budget yet, so...
I would just say that makes great common sense. I wish we lived in a world where the state approved their budget so we knew what our budget was going to be. Unfortunately, for most of my tenure as a superintendent, boards of education are duty bound to do these things before we know what the actual numbers are that we will have, because the state's fiscal year begins October 1st, and school district's fiscal year begins July 1st. And that's set by the state legislature and statute. So we're in this spot where many times we have to be making purchases to have items ready for the upcoming school year when we don't exactly know what our budget is. But I would say this, what we do with our budget is we copy everything that we've done in the current year, and then we move that forward, and we say, what changes do we want to make? The items tonight that are under the grouping that you talked about are items that are currently in this year's budget, with the exception of the data security solution. That is a new purchase on that. But the other items are essentially renewals that we have, that are already in this year's budget on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Could I, and give me your thoughts on this, Mrs. DeBoer. For item six B six, the music equipment dedicated to percussion instruments here, would it be okay with you if we took it even one further? It promoted a lot of good discussion the last week around the purchases of this and the whole system that we have in place for assessing needs in the music department. Could we even maybe table it for a month rather than separate for a vote? Just to learn a little bit more, to hear a little more about our process there before we approve that? I don't think it's an urgent purchase that we need to make necessarily, so I don't think it'd sacrifice anything to...
For six and seven?
Just for, just for six was my thought for that. The item seven is a little more intuitive. I don't think there's much, from my perspective, to change on there, but to hear a little bit more about our music capital outlay and things before voting on that one would be helpful for me, if that's okay.
And I think that's what I was going to ask, is when I pulled those out separate from the other ones, is I would like to table both of them till next time. Because I think we, in finding out even for the piano in discussion, we found out that what we purchased before and the price that we pay and the things that we're doing, I just think there's room for that number to go down a little bit for us, to give it another month to look into, but...
I do know the only thing with the piano piece was that we were, I think, for that purchase is on a timeline, because that thing is being held or something for us. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is a little more of a time-sensitive purchase, again, that people, that our folks in the district have said is the right piano for us to get and all of that. So I don't know if tabling that hurts us in that way or not. And we find out we're, we don't have a good deal on something anymore because it's gone. There's mildly concern there, but...
Because the price is being held for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's for a piano, so...
So the price will go up substantially if we wait?
No, we don't know. We just don't, I just don't know if it remains a hold for us forever.
I think the piano will be released to be sold to somebody else.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a few different things going on here. I guess first, let's do a voice vote on the idea of tabling until next, our next meeting, item six B six, the music equipment. All in favor of tabling music equipment until our next meeting, say aye.
I make a motion that we table item six B six until our next meeting.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, do I have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? All right, we will table music equipment until next month. And then, do I have a motion to table the piano until our next meeting?
Motion we table the piano.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and could we do a voice vote on whether to table the Fine Arts Center piano until next month? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Maybe let's do a roll call vote, because it's a little hard to tell.
Okay, Dr. Mashad?
Aye.
Ms. Nymeier?
Sure, yeah, aye.
Ms. DeBoer?
Aye.
Ms. Blonk?
Aye.
Ms. Koval?
Nay.
Mrs. Tryan?
Aye.
Dr. Fawson?
No.
Okay, so both of those passed and will be tabled until our next meeting. All right, so now we are back to our consent grouping minus those two items.
Yep, and then minus the items.
And minus the items that DeBoer, Mrs. DeBoer wanted to have separated out for a separate vote. So this would be, all right, before we get to vote, we need to hear from our committees, actually. So, all right, so for, and well, actually, Superintendent Beam, do you have anything you would like to pull out?
I do, thank you.
Or draw our attention to?
Under the consent grouping tonight, we are doing four things that we typically do at this meeting at this time of the year, and they're good things. We are officially asking the board to adopt a resolution congratulating our retirees, those who are here tonight and those who couldn't make it. And we will send a special correspondence on behalf of the board to those who couldn't be here tonight. Also, under the consent grouping, we are recommending the approval of the membership resolution for the upcoming school year for the Michigan High School Athletic Association. And also tonight, we are recommending to the Kent ISD parent advisors of special education, our three representatives who will represent the parents in Forest Hills Public Schools for the parent advisory committee that Kent ISD has for special education. And then tonight, we are also recommending the employment of new staff members in many areas and departments of the district, and we are very excited about that. And thank all of the administrators and staff members who have helped go through the interview and background check process to bring these new recommendations to you tonight. That's all I wanted to pull out for notice.
Thank you, Superintendent Beam. We will go over to our committee meeting reports. I will start off with curriculum, because I sat in on the curriculum. It was a rather long meeting, but it was long mostly because of finance. So, most of the stuff will be covered by Dr. Mashad. For curriculum, though, we did look at a five-year online access and professional learning of resources for Spanish immersion. And although I took Spanish for a number of years, I do not speak it anymore. I am an example of use it or lose it, and so I will not try to pronounce the name of this curriculum, but it's in the board book. We're also recommending Chinese Immersion Mandarin Matrix materials for online access and professional learning. A 30-day review of Because of Mr. Terupt and Legend are the two books that are being reviewed. And then we also had an amazing PBIS presentation. And PBIS is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. We've discussed this a few times over the last several months. This is a program that's been around for a very, very long time, and it's been used sporadically at some of our schools. And it is now going to be implemented district-wide. It's, it'll systematize and streamline all of our behavior expectations, consequences, the language we use with students and staff, about how we act in our buildings and at our playgrounds and on our buses and everywhere throughout the district. And it creates sort of a common platform so that everyone knows the expectations for the appropriate behavior, no matter what your role in the district is. It was a really amazing, and it kind of, it played off of what was presented at our previous board meeting over at Central Woodlands. It's something that they've been doing at Central Woodlands for a long time and really have been championing. So that was really it from the curricular side of curriculum, but we did have a lot from finance. But if you had have any questions regarding curriculum, I'm happy to try to answer them. Anything? Okay, then we will turn it over to Dr. Mashad for an update from finance.
Okay, thank you. Similar, we had a robust meeting, as it is in June, with our financial year coming to a close. To begin, I'll put the price tags on our two programs for our immersion programs, again, that will, that have been vetted. And we had the presentation of how these are going to be implemented, you know, to support our multiple subjects in our elementary buildings. The Spanish immersion program, ENIL, I won't try to pronounce it either, is up to us for approval for a cost not to exceed $64,500 out of our general fund. Again, that's literacy interventions throughout the school. It's got professional learning, online access. That's a five-year online subscription. And the Mandarin Matrix series, also a five-year process. That comes with books, professional learning as well. And it aligns with our English Language Arts, our science, our math standards kind of across the board, is for an amount not to exceed $115,900, also out of our general fund. So those are two curriculum pieces. Beyond that, quite a number of items, again, some annual things that are usually done at this point of the year. One is to renew our annual agreement with Power School, the umbrella program that houses a lot of our finance, payroll, human resources, employee records. We approved, if you will call earlier this year, some expansion, kind of modules to that as well for our online enrollment, e-collect forms, all those things. So an annual agreement with them runs from July to June for a cost of $213,182 out of our general fund. Our next request for approval is for internet service. It's another annual thing that we approve. The recommendation to us is to continue with AT&amp;T, who we have been with for 15 years in the district. And Director of Technology, Mrs. Case, gave us a long list beyond the price of reasons that they are a good fit for us and we have a good relationship with them. This was sent out to bid, so we received multiple bids back, and the recommendation is to remain with AT&amp;T next year for a cost not to exceed $34,000, again, out of our general fund. The next item is for an annual renewal of Incident IQ Help Desk, which is the inventory software that we switched over to this year that helps manage tickets in the system and our system inventory. And there are additional modules being built in through the summer and into the fall. That renewal is for one year at a cost not to exceed $33,320, again, out of our general fund. The next is the data security solution that Superintendent Beam mentioned. This is a recommendation for Veronis Data Advantage Cloud Cybersecurity. You recall, earlier this year, we approved endpoint protection software that is kind of attached to our physical electronic assets. This is our cloud-based security, essentially cybersecurity. The team tested, saw demos, kind of vetted multiple products, and landed on this Veronis Data Advantage. It is, again, a kind of a requirement from insurers now that we carry this insurance to protect us from cyber threats. It works well with our Google Drive infrastructure that we already have. And the technology department feels very good about its adaptability, scalability for our future needs. So that comes out of the general fund as well for a cost not to exceed $105,000 for a three-year agreement that would begin this July. The next item is, well, I'll save that one for the end. The next item is another annual request for paper and supplies, which we do every year. We participate, or where the recommendation is to participate, again, with the Regional Education Media Center, RMC, which is a statewide purchasing co-op that has a lot of buying power, obviously, to purchase our needs in terms of paper and copying supplies for the whole district for the following year. So that, we are participating, again, for a cost not to exceed $160,000 out of the general fund. And our final item for approval tonight is a small increase in the price of our type A lunch. Type A lunch being the non-free or reduced, just the general cost of a meal in our elementary and secondary buildings. The goal in our food service fund is to have it be financially self-sufficient and self-supporting, and not require general fund dollars to fund that. Based on the costs around us and the vetting that we can discuss that has gone in, the recommendation is for a 10 cent increase to both of those programs, from $295 to $305 for an elementary type A lunch, and from $320 to $330, a 10 cent increase for the secondary lunch. This is fitting with the increases that we made prior to the pandemic years, the last two or three, where we have received a lot of supplemental funding for these programs and have not needed to increase. So it is fitting kind of with our average increases to date before that. We also got to see five to 10 like schools in terms of size and whose elementary prices were anywhere from $250 to $350, and secondary prices were $275 to $4. So with this increase, we're still squarely kind of in the middle of the range there in terms of what we'd be asking. The final thing to note about this is that the budget proposals, still being debated at the state level, also have varying degrees of lunch support for public education, leading up, all the way up to full coverage in the way of grants for students' lunches. So we may approve this and not need it at all, but as our office does a very nice job of prepping for, you know, the, not the worst case, but the possible, we want to get this approved tonight in the event that we do need it. So that's a 10 cent increase in lunch. And that rounds out the items from finance this month.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dr. Mashad? Okay, Mrs. DeBoer, do you still wish to have those items pulled out separately for a separate vote?
That's true, I skipped over them as well. I could address them if you wanted, but...
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Could I please have a motion to, for consent grouping items six A one, six B one, six C one and two, and six D one through four?
I move we approve the consent grouping items as just stated by Dr. Fawson.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on these items? No? Okay, can we please move to a roll call vote?
Yes. Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Nymeier?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Oh.
Ms. Blonk?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryan, yes. Dr. Fawson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did not hear Ms. DeBoer's vote. Was that yes or no?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we will go back and do a, can I have a motion to consider items six B two through five and six B eight and nine?
I move we approve items six B two, three, four, five, eight, and nine.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on... Discussion on those items?
I got, can I go back one second? I've got two different agendas here. One's got numerals and the other one's just got letters. So are we going off the numeral ones?
Did you want to?
I mean, this is the one I got. I got both of them, but this is the one that I pulled it off from. So the first one that you just called out for the grouping. The second one you just called out is the ones I just called out, or did you do the first one?
We just voted on the ones that you had not called out.
That was the one I messed up because I was reading this when you were saying it, and I'm not looking at this.
Ah, okay.
Jeremy, do you redo the roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you, let's just confirm what we're roll calling for again.
I thought she was calling the ones out first that I called out.
No, this is all the ones that you didn't call out.
Because it's on these ones, you're doing VB, so I'm looking at B under business and counting the numbers and stuff. So that was my fault.
Okay, let's, let me redo it.
Okay.
Do it.
Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Nyamire?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Ms. Funk?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fawson?
Yes.
Okay. Now the consideration for 6B, 2 through 5, 8, and 9.
Should we do a four, we'll do another motion here. Can we have a motion to consider those items?
I did the motion, so I think if Maggie doesn't mind, just doing the vote again.
Just do the vote again?
Yep.
Awesome. Any discussion on those items? Because that's where we left off.
Okay. Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Nyamire?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
No.
Ms. Funk?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Fawson?
Yes. Okay. That takes care of the consent agenda. We are now up to informational items. Superintendent Beam?
Yes, this is the time of year where some of our staff members are moving on to other things, and sometimes they're literally moving to other areas. So I have approved resignations consistent with board policy and the collective bargaining agreements. That's it.
Information items.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now on to the superintendent's search, and we are going to do the amended agenda item of.
We just skipped superintendent's report.
Oh, did I skip the superintendent report? I am so sorry.
No problem. I would try to keep it brief.
Letting you not have your glory here. Superintendent report, please.
No, that is fine. I don't need any glory here. Just an update on our bond program. We continue to look at all of our facility needs, and we are also projecting that out into the future. As we've discussed before, we have a program of service not only in technology hardware needs that we have all throughout the district, but also things that are mundane, such as roof membranes and water heaters and mechanical equipment and parking lots. All of those things are on a schedule of useful life. We simply don't go blindly on that schedule. We actually look at all those things as they're coming due to the end of their useful life, and sometimes you can eke out a few more years to air handling equipment or a parking lot or some of those things. But we want to be able to build a budget for those items. And so as we look forward to the future, we are continuing with the bond approved by the voters in 2018. But as I've said to the parent advisory committee many times, we're constantly looking at what are our future needs coming on that. And we are preparing to bring a question to the community, perhaps in November of 2023, for future bond requests. My stipulation has been, I do not want to bring any recommendation to the board that would have the board considering an increase in the tax rate that we have for retiring these bonds. We happen to enjoy a commercial base here and a residential base that is very strong that, for our operating dollars, are sent to Lansing and then redistributed throughout the state. But for bond purposes, they stay here locally, and that's a great advantage for us. So we are looking at that. We are specifically looking into buildings that we've not renovated, as well as outdoor sites. And I'll just start a little bit with the outdoor sites of what we're looking at. We are looking at Northern and Eastern, our two schools where we do not have a second multi-use turf field, and that helps with our student athletes, so we don't have to program practice so late, and it also helps from a maintenance standpoint. We are also looking at Eastern High School of creating a second driveway into the campus off of Pettis for the student parking lot. That'll alleviate a lot of the congestion that we have on that campus. We are looking at baseball and softball field upgrades at all three of our secondary campuses. And we are also looking at Northern High School, some refinement of parking options that we've got on that campus, as we're landlocked on that. At Central High School, we are looking at the potential of a major renovation to the interior of the building. People know the history around here. That's our oldest building that was originally Forest Hills High School. I learned from talking with students who did a deep research dive on this, we had 14 different buildings as part of the California Campus High School when that school was built in the 1960s. And some of those 14 buildings we've knocked down, some of them we've sort of swallowed up like an amoeba in the existing building. But what we want to do is create a more efficient building and a building where there's more natural light. If you spent time inside Central High School, there are many rooms that don't have natural light in them as well. So that's another renovation. We're also looking at a substantial interior renovation at Northern Hills Middle School. And going back to Northern High School, for the other wings of the building, we did renovations in the west academic wing, but we've not been elsewhere in the building, so we're looking to do that. And then as we look at our elementary buildings, renovations at Ada Elementary, at Meadowbrook Elementary, and we need to do a few smaller things at Goodwilly, and then eventually down the road, we'll have some items we need to replace at Nap Forest that, believe it or not, will be coming to the end of their useful life, as we're almost 20 years on that building, as well as a few items in this building and the Community Aquatic Center. Speaking of the aquatic center, those are interesting facilities to maintain, and that building is now three-plus decades old. So we are asking that question of, does it make more sense to make the improvements to that aquatic center, or does it make sense to look at something different to satisfy those needs? So those are all the things that we're looking in depth at doing. I'll just finish up on the current bond authorization. We are underway, in the midst of renovations at Central Middle School. We have begun renovations at Ada Vista Elementary, and we are just about to begin, at the end of this week, renovations at Pine Ridge Elementary. We also have a variety of other things that take place that aren't as noticeable, roof replacements, we did some work here in this building. We're also looking at a secure entrance for Eastern Middle School. We have not had that piece in place. That's the one building, we don't have that feature in place, and we are looking to put that into place. So that's a little bit on bond update on that front. A little bit on budget update, as I mentioned before, the state of Michigan is working on putting together a final budget for the upcoming school year, fiscal year 2024, as the state will call it. We expect to see something here in the month of June. There's been a little bit of back and forth between the members of the legislature and the governor's office on when they will have something that will be a final conference committee report that both chambers would vote on and then send to the governor's desk. We haven't seen the details of that conference committee report, but it really could be any day now here in the month of June that that could be moving forward on that. So we're anxious to see that. I said I'd be brief, but let me just finish with some thank yous tonight. I said a lot earlier, but thank you to Jeremy Cox. Jeremy, thanks for hosting us here tonight. Thank you for all that you do for the Fine Arts Center. Jeremy should have his own sleeping quarters right back there. He's here so much of the time. But thank you, Jeremy. I appreciate all your work and hosting us. Thank you to Elizabeth Brink and all that she's done. She's out there someplace back there. Thank you, Elizabeth. Oh, you're hiding back there. Thank you, Elizabeth, for all your work in honoring so many people tonight and helping make this a smooth event. And I would also like to thank my executive assistant, Val Clements. Val does a tremendous job and keeps me pointed in the right direction, especially these past few weeks, as I've been on farewell tours in each of the buildings, and those have been wonderfully special events. And thank you, Val, for all that you do to keep me moving in the straight and narrow. I appreciate it very much. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to our superintendent's search and the interim search process where we left off in our special meeting at 6:30.
So Dr. Schubel, thank you so much for sticking around. I think it was maybe a blessing in disguise that this worked out the way it did, because we certainly want our board members to get a chance to interact with you. I know I didn't get a chance to do this, but really quickly, I had the opportunity to connect with several of her past board members. One happens to be an attorney for our district who had just nothing but positive comments, everything from how they operate to the teamwork that takes place to make sure things are done correctly, nothing but outstanding comments. Another one said that they landed an incredible person who did a wonderful job for our district. We're lucky to be pursuing this person. Got a lot of things buttoned down that weren't buttoned down. Another board member said, can't say enough about her. She's an amazing leader, helped us navigate difficult waters. How fortunate are we to have someone of her caliber in our district. And she believes in public education down to her bones, quote unquote. So if you would be interested and willing to come back up and chat with us for a little bit, that would be wonderful. Are you fine doing this podium? Is that okay?
Or we're right over there.
What a problem solver. Thank you. Okay, so do you want, you cut short. Is there anything else you wanted to share? Were you able to give us kind of a good synopsis of where you're coming from?
I think I was rambling because I was trying to get through everything.
I'm so sorry.
But, you know, it's, it's fine. It's covered. You know, you know, I've said this before, whatever candidate you'd have in front of you would have similar background as far as experience, or you wouldn't be bringing them forward. And I look forward to the conversation. If you have questions, great.
Well, I know a few of us have had a chance to meet you already, but a few of you have not, so I'm hoping that you have a couple of questions that perhaps you've thought of that might you want to throw at Dr. Schubel. I will say that I was very impressed with all of the amazing references. I had a chance to chat with you a bit, and I've just heard absolutely nothing but good things. And the feeling that I got when I spoke with you is you are just very down-to-earth, very organized, very driven, and are offering yourself for this position, not because this is your job, you're not one of the traveling interims, but because you are there, because you want to help Forest Hills.
Correct. I am not a traveling interim superintendent. I have actually turned down opportunities because I feel passionate about public education. This happens to be in the county where I was a superintendent, and I know the amazing work that Forest Hills Public Schools has done, and what you need to do and what you're going to hope to accomplish to move forward, and I'd love to be part of that. And I also know that it's interim. And there is a beginning and there is an end, and I'm more than willing to do that.
That was going to be my question was why, but you answered that. Why come out of retirement? Because when I retire, I want to be done, which is a long time from now. But my question is, so we, you know, have strategic plans that are in progress. What is your experience with strategic planning, and how do you see the interim role helping that out?
Actually, I have quite a bit of strategic planning background because that's what I did when I worked at the Ingham Intermediate School District. I was all with general education, but we did strategic planning. And so I understand the process of what that looks like when you're developing a strategic plan. I also know it needs to be very fluid because we're at a very different point in education than we were five, 10 years ago. Technology has had a huge impact in the way we deliver instruction and bringing our staff up to speed on that. And I know Forest Hills has done an amazing job on that, but we're always changing. And challenge helps you move forward, and if you're not challenged, you're not changing. Strategic planning can't be like it was 15 years ago where you established a five-year plan and you said, these are our benchmarks, and we walk away. You have to be very fluid on what you are trying to accomplish and have action plans along the way, and understand that it's really a three- to five-year plan, period. You cannot establish a 10-year plan. You can establish a 10-year plan if you're thinking facilities, and this is what we're looking for long-term there. But when you're talking about instruction, curriculum, assessments, you have to be fluid and be able to continue to move to meet the needs of all of your students.
Thanks.
I know this is going to be a challenging situation for the board. Really, I, when I talk to Mary, I understand that you wanted the gift of time to be able to be sure that you select a candidate, you know, a future superintendent who's also going to be able to give you longevity. And I get that, and I know how important that is. And I also understand the change process, and that people aren't necessarily resistant to change. They're resistant to the middle part, which is called transition. So they know there's going to be change. Dan's retiring. They know there's going to be a new one coming in permanently. I'm interim. I would love to help with that transition period, because that's the piece that people usually struggle with.
I was just going to ask, as our next-door neighbor for so many years, what do you see as some of the main differences in leading Forest Hills versus leading East, if you do see that there's differences?
Well, I do think you have very common student demographics, involved community, which is an incredible asset to a superintendent when they come into a district. So I think that that's solid. You know, there's, you're not trying to develop the community involvement. You already have that. You already have a legacy of student achievement. I had the same thing at East. You know, I walked into a district where tradition is a capital T. So whatever I would ask questions, similar to Dan, it was this hesitation of, are you going to change something? I don't want to change things unless it needs to. Are you doing best practices? And if you're doing best practices, then you don't need to change them. But if you're not doing best practices, reflection is really critical to moving a district forward. And as I said earlier, a high-achieving school district, the challenge of moving them further is really hard because you're already at the top, and I would say the same thing that East was. So, you know, it was really challenging staff to understand what additional things could we do. We took, we had lots of discussions about grading practices. What does that mean? Well, when you come in and you've had an established program at the high school and everyone says, well, it's already worked. It works. Having those deep conversations about things, and they don't change overnight, you have to provide the opportunities for staff to learn and to understand. And I'm using grading practices as one because we all went to school and grading practices were pretty much the same, you know? And so you had to have a lot of conversation about what's the assessment, and are you using the same assessment across all content, you know, the four teachers that teach it, you know, what's that look like, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school? So there are a lot of commonalities. The big difference is I was noticing the buses in the little videos that you're showing. I was one of the fortunate ones that didn't have to really deal with the struggles with transportation because our transportation was very limited. It was for our special population, and it was for transporting to the ISD, and it was athletics. So it wasn't the pickup and drop-off in the morning of, you know, all the challenges that I hear from my colleagues around the state, who always said that I was very fortunate, and they were right, I was, so.
That was actually, what I was going to ask about was transportation specifically, so I know you're aware of that. I was also wondering about, you spoke of the transition as the difficult time. What do you anticipate may be some of the challenges you'll be encountering during that transition period?
Well, it's really the unknown. I mean, when I talked to the subcommittee, I said, my credibility doesn't come with me. My experience does, but I'd have to go back, I'd have to go out into the buildings and establish credibility with staff, to have them have that open communication, to be able to say, this is really what we're hoping the board is looking for. I hope that they're hearing us when we talk about what we need as a school leader going forward. And then I would be your voice coming back to share that with them. them. But it's not easy. I mean, developing relationships. Mary, you know, I, I gave her a couple of board members to call and I said, these were long-term board members. They'll be able to tell you the highs and the lows of my leadership style, you know. But for me, the importance of working with the board because you represent the community and the superintendent represents the district. So it's important that there's a hand-in-hand on that and that you understand that, have that trust that I heard earlier. That's very important. And it takes time to build that relationship. So I look forward to it if I'm selected.
So you mentioned leadership style. What is your leadership style?
I don't ask anyone to do anything I wouldn't do. So I have confidence in my staff. So if you're responsible for an area of expertise, you know, as I said, I came with a lot of curriculum background when I came to East. And it was really hard for me to walk by those meetings and see staff just having a grand time, you know, like really digging into curriculum and having fun with it. And knowing that I, I had to just be an observer because I couldn't, I had to trust that the people we had in those roles could do it. And that was a learning curve for me because I really wanted to be involved. And then I realized, you have really competent staff. You need to be able to step back and lead them, guide them, give them opportunities to continue to grow. I told the subcommittee, I'm a strong believer in capacity building. I think that you have internal staff members that are, would be amazing leaders. What will you do as a district to help facilitate that for them? Do you give them opportunities to go to trainings? Do you, you know, how do you continue to help them grow? If a staff member would come to me and ask for opportunities to show that they were, they had potential to be leaders, what, what did I do? I thought my role was always to leave, to leave, to help them grow and become a better educator. And, and if it was a great investment in the district to train them and have them get opportunities, yes, they might leave us. And some of them did in order to get opportunities for leadership because East was smaller. You, you just didn't have as many openings. So, but I felt very good about the fact that I could say to the district they were going to, they're well-prepared and they'll serve you well.
I don't know where my button is. It's like, am I on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm used to the red thing. Really quick, our school is kind of that really unique flavor with, we're actually three schools combined in one. What do you think would be your most challenging, like viewing that because it's not East, you know what I mean, where it's just like one unit? And then what do you think would be, I guess, on the light end of it, what would be the most fun of, of serving our three communities combined together?
Well, for, for starters, I'd have to learn about your three communities. I'm assuming you're a system. And when you bring them into the system, you're going to say, welcome to Forest Hills Public Schools. It doesn't matter which school you go to, you're going to get the same quality education whether you go to Building A, Building B, Building C. So that's important. And you want to be able to have equal opportunity, no matter what elementary, what middle school, or what secondary. So yes, it's a challenge because you're right. They have three different, you know, I don't, I don't know what those are, you know. I really don't. Because I spent 12 years being very vested in the school district that I was in. I did have lots of conversations with Dan because he was in the same region. And so, you know, we had lots of conversations about curriculum and structure and what would that look like? And how do you, you know, make sure that everyone feels that they're being valued, you know, and that it's okay if you go to Building A, Building B, Building C. It's Forest Hills Public Schools.
Well, I think we are trying to work really hard on that PBIS piece and really trying to make it clear that if you belong here, you belong anywhere here. That it is not really three, like there, there are nicknames that are very outdated for this community. And I'm really trying to bring that together. So I do like to hear that you would view it as it is Forest Hills Public Schools.
It is Forest Hills Public Schools. They get one diploma and the diploma says Forest Hills Public Schools. The joy, Holly, you know, when I was watching those videos and, you know, heard the comment that Dan said, you know, going to kindergarten and watching the kids. If I was having a challenging day, I would immediately go into the lower level because that's where they give you hugs. They ask you if you own a dog, you know, what kind of car do you drive, you know. They want, they want to engage with you at all levels. I remember one time I got a, a letter from a first-grade classroom and it was persuasive writing. And it happened to be a day that I did not call a snow day. And so it was really going at me about, you know, did I not know that, you know, their sidewalks were, you know, slippery? Did I not know that their parents' car door was frozen solid? You know, I mean, it was just an amazing persuasive writing letter. So instead of trying to respond to them in writing, I, excuse me, I asked the first-grade teacher if they would mind if I'd come in that afternoon because I was available and I would love to have that conversation with them in the moment. So I, I went and it was like an inquisition, let me tell you, because they were all lined up, ready. They were going to go out to recess, but they sat down and they were just going to have this conversation. And afterwards, they were, they were fine. But you had to have that conversation with them. And you know, like, here's how we go about making these decisions. It's not just, I don't just wake up and walk out my, in my driveway, you know. And so it was, for me, those were, that was fun. It was a lot of fun to have first graders just grilling me on snow day. Of course, then I also had my children in the high school when I wouldn't call a snow day. And, and I got a petition one time from the high school and it was all about, you know, traffic and blah, 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 and why I should have called and whatever. And I'm reading, I'm just looking, I read the letter and then I'm seeing all these signatures and I see my son's name on there. And so of course, when I get home, I'm like, seriously? I'm getting hammered? And he goes, Mom, try being a freshman in the cafeteria when they're walking around with a petition. Of course, I'm going to sign it. And I'm like, okay, I get it. So it's fun just engaging with students. I enjoyed being asked to go into classrooms. I enjoyed being part of government debates, you know, things like that. So that's truly where the joy comes. And I told Mary, I said, I'm like Dan, I love policy. Just always have. So.
Anybody else? Other questions?
I mean, if not, I move that we enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Sarah Schubel as our interim superintendent.
Wholeheartedly second.
Discussion?
I would only, I would only further that we just, again, this was a more informal process of finding people who are available, who have the expertise, who have the CV. I mean, this big, you know, conglomeration of things that we're looking for to fill this very unique position. And we, we turned over many stones and every one of them simply had glowing things to say about Dr. Schubel. It said, you are lucky. We asked her to and she wouldn't do it. You know, she's turned down other places. It's, it's, it's hard to think of a quality that we would be desiring that you don't have all kinds of wisdom and experience in. I, I feel very good about, about seconding this and would love to see Dr. Schubel.
I agree. I immediately went and spoke to teachers that I know that work in the district and wanted to know more. And I just had a consistent story of strength and consistency and trust.
I did my own little digging too. And I got the same story. It's only, only good things from people I know in East. And having somebody that is willing to stay here a year, who was at a strong district in our, in our neighborhood and wants to be and help with this transition phase and understands the challenges that will come with that, I think that's a gift.
I think that's what you said is part of the key is it's somebody from our backyard. You know, we could open up the interim search nationally like we will, the regular superintendent search. And there might be some people who are, you know, fantastic, that look great on paper. And they don't know Grand Rapids. They don't know West Michigan. They don't know our neck of the woods. And granted, East is not exactly the same as Forest Hills. We all know that. But there are so many common similarities between the two and the inclusive communities that we've got that really want the best for their kids and all kind of come together and work together. I feel like having somebody who has been willing to come back and help our district that already knows our district versus some unknown quality, quantity who looks great on paper but doesn't know anything about us, the learning curve will be extremely steep.
Because it's such a short amount of time.
And it's a short amount of time, exactly.
Well, I like that you brought that up. I mean, when it comes to an interim, that is very different. And you have already, the committee has already looked at Michigan. And that is where we would think we would really want an interim to come from. As you pointed out, the backyard. Might not be the backyard anywhere else in the state, but how can we find someone who truly knows our area, our community? It's, I don't know. This is a wonderful opportunity.
Can I just, I'm just curious. I think, Mary, you alluded to this a little bit, but timing and the ability for Dr. Schubel to still, I don't know what the right word would be, but shadow Dan for a little bit before he does have to officially be done? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes.
Or re-explain it?
Yes. So there, by law, Dan cannot take money from any public school in the state for nine months. But in addition to that, he can't even be on this property, any district property, or speak to anybody in any sort of professional capacity here for 30 days. So whenever he formally says, I am done, he is off the clock for 30 days. So we have three months of summer, two or three months of summer. If that day is June 30th, then he is not accessible by Dr. Schubel or any of us for 30 days. He is back on the clock August 1st. We start school sometime around August 20th. So that seemed to be an optimal time to try to lay this out. He has offered, if we had a trouble finding somebody that suits our needs, that he would be willing to stay around in some capacity through July 31st, which means his 30 days would be July 31st to August 31st, right through the time that we have to get geared up to start school.
Which would be difficult, yeah.
Right. And new staff and whatnot. So that was some of the rationale as to can we possibly take advantage of this meeting because we're not the easiest group to coordinate to see if we can get this discussion on the agenda and move this forward. Does that clarify?
Yeah.
Makes sense, you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add to this discussion. I think when we first talked to Michigan Association of School Board, and I'm just, I'm just going through policy really quick, Sarah, sorry, about procedures that we have because, I mean, you have a lovely resume and it's been really wonderful to hear your thoughts and comments back and forth. When we first started this process and we talked to Michigan Association of School Board, I brought up the June 30th date. And Mary, I believe you're the one that said, we're going way too fast to slow the process down. Okay? And then in that, we talked about forming, we formed the committee and had the subcommittee give them the power to be our advisory board, not our decision-making board, was the understanding we all had, correct? So I feel like we're at this point right now that we had told the public why we wanted to slow down was to create transparency across the board for every decision that we made for the leader of our school, correct? Whether it's an interim or whether it's the actual superintendent that we hire. I feel at this point that we have done a disservice to our public in not being transparent. We've talked about forming a website and getting people involved and parents. And I know that there would be a lot more seats filled out here tonight had they would have known what, what we were doing. And I was under the understanding that we were just looking at candidates and not voting on candidates. And I'm on this board. So I don't know how I missed the message that we were under the understanding that we were going to discuss things in length and then, and then have other, you know, candidates. And secondly, I think we've got firms that are waiting to work for us, which I know that we're going to be talking about tonight as well. I just think we, I think we missed the boat about being transparent to the public, which is one of the things that we struggle with greatly. And we know that. That was one of the things that we wrote down was communication, transparency, and the things that we had been involved in for the last three years during COVID and the different things that we've had, is trying to bring our community together, not shove them further away and kind of put a burr in the saddle. That, that's just not what we were, we were to do. So I'm a little puzzled at where we're at right now and finding out the information that you guys started this two weeks ago was when the first calls were made. And I just found out about it this last, before the weekend started. So last time I checked, I'm on, I'm on the board. So I'm, I, I think I would like to hear what happened and why we're at this position. And that's why I wanted the firm to go first was because when we talked to each firm, there were some people, there was only five of us there that we, it was a question we asked each firm was to give us a list of candidates for interim. So I guess I'm, I'm open to hear your thoughts, but I, I think a little...
Are you responding on behalf of the committee? Can I respond on behalf of the committee?
I have not intentionally. I've stayed out of all this process. I don't think it's appropriate for me to be involved. But I can say what I see that's trying to happen. What, what I see is the board is trying to provide a long period of time to get community input, to have a firm in place, to have community input when the community is likely to be around and out in the summer months and like. So what I see is the board wanted to find a way to get more time by having an interim superintendent be able to provide that time to get to the transparency that you're talking about and to get all the input on that. I think when it's coming to finding an interim superintendent, you're looking for someone who's got qualifications, who's got experience, who can come in and certainly put their hand on the wheel and guide the district. But to do that in a way that is fully understanding that they are creating conditions for a new long-term superintendent to come into place. And what I see the board is trying to do is trying to bring about a process that will go many months that brings in all the input rather than trying to rush the process of bringing in a permanent superintendent on that. So that's just from, and that's typical from what I've seen with other school districts. That's a customary piece when there's an effort to try to, again, find that runway of time that's needed.
Can I?
I think too, I feel like, I remember feeling resistant to the idea of an interim. I felt like I wanted to just get a superintendent place. I thought our district needed that. I felt like an interim would create, almost like a, like we were stalled for a year. And so when we did meet with MAS B, I remember he said, I think the reason that an interim is good is because you can get somebody in here quickly to hold this place. And then you can take way more time and be much more transparent, which we, he knew we were interested in doing, with hiring our full-time superintendent. So that helped me understand the difference between the process of placing an interim superintendent and then what we would be hiring our search firm to do. That's, that's how I interpreted what MAS B told us, is not that the same process would happen for an interim because that is such a different position, but it would help us take as much time as we needed to, to place our official superintendent. And we discussed kind of the difficulties of trying to be transparent with the community over the summer because people are coming and going and it's hard to get people at forums and for them to do surveys. And so this allowed us to do that in a more robust way once school started back up and people were around.
I think Maggie also want to add the quality of candidates and how limiting it would be to try to rush that superintendent search because that's not the time of year when superintendents who would be serious about coming into our, our community and, and staying for that longevity that we're shooting for, that's just not the timeline for them. So it was really important. Like at first, I felt the same thing, that it was, it was important to, to get Like, at first, I felt the same thing, that it was, it was important to, to get on that. But learning more about it revealed that that's, you know, that's not in superintendent's best interest. And so I, we want, we want the highest quality candidate. And, and I do like how that you are showing really the difference between the two. Our interim is, is somebody even keeled to keep that ship afloat. They're not coming in to disrupt. It's not that interviewing for a vision for the district to change things up. This is so that we have the time we need to involve all, all community members, all stakeholders, and also the superintendent that we ultimately choose as well, that we're respecting their timeline and their ability to make a choice that's best for their families and, and their, their, where else they may be currently working as a superintendent. So I, that, all of those things are important.
And Holly, so same as you, coming into this and not being on the committee, I think I interpret it as, yes, transparency is super important, and having the community involved is very important to all of us, for sure. But for the person that will be here, hopefully, for 17-plus years, not this person that will just keep us steady so that we can do that huge, long process of getting everybody involved. And that's how I interpreted it. So that's why maybe not everybody understands that that's what we're doing tonight, but that's the community involvement and transparency and having everybody be able to vet out our new superintendent and give us feedback. That's for the person that we want to have long-term, no matter how awesome Dr. Schubel is, she will be gone in a year.
Well, and I think the thing for me is that with the transparency piece, that, and the fact that we specifically asked that any decisions not be slated to any one of our members. I mean, you know how important that was. Mary and I have had conversations about that. And I feel like offering, one, we should be offering three good candidates so we have a, as a chance to look and reflect. And the second thing I want to say is the MASB also did say to be careful when we picked an intern, that we didn't scare people away for the superintendent position too. So if we choose somebody that's going to stay a year, then that person will stay one year. It's not all of a sudden rolling into they're the new superintendent. I, I think that's in, you know, and I've been very clear about certain things that I'll make sure that I'm not, I went through this process at Orchardville Elementary, where they handpicked the principal, and then they made all of his parents go through this process, even though, and he was third in line on our vote, and they still chose him because they had pre-planned it. So I had a call, Gloria Graber, and asked what just happened. We wasted all of our time. So that was one of the things I said was important for this, that not, something was not placed in front of us, that we were not allowed to make a decision on, because tonight we're actually making a yes or no decision and not a, a whole bunch of candidate positions that we can view. So that's, and I think, and I think for advertising it, yes, we post things on this, but this was a superintendent search, this is still a part of it. And it absolutely should have been put other places for people to, there should be more people in this room. I would just say that. There should be way more. And I think we dropped the ball, not letting the community know fully what, what we were doing. And I did ask, "Are we voting tonight?" And somebody said, "No, we're not voting on this tonight." And I, and we're at this point where we're voting, so.
I guess my understanding on that is entering into contract negotiations is not the same thing as hiring somebody. That's one thing, but I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding here. The other piece, I, I guess, and again, I want to, you know, I'm sharing what I'm understanding here, is that there were six interim, six interim superintendents. And I mean, it's, it's, facts are, if two of them are not going to do it, if another one went to another district, if another one is, I mean, that's, there's not a gigantic pool of superintendents and especially interim superintendents. And I don't know, I just feel like the process done by the committee was, was thorough to bring forward the options that were available. And yeah, I, I just want to say that. I think that that was done well.
There's a group that I don't want us to forget about in this as well, because Holly, yes, we all share the desire, again, what has all been said before about slowing our full superintendent process down, being, I mean, we asked, I guess we talk about in the firms, some of these firms have these exhaustive lists of things they do to engage the community. And we asked almost all of them, "How would you feel about doubling for, for our search? More than you've ever done?" That's a priority for all of us. I, I would stand against the comment that we are not being transparent with this, because the group that has not been mentioned, community, yes, but kids as, as well. And it's not fair to Dan to try to get our schedules coordinated to meet five additional times with five additional people, kind of to bring them all, so that we can all do this whole process of a committee as a group of, of seven. Because then Dan, that is never going to get out of here, because that's going to take us months. And then Dan is gone for 30 days where he can't communicate with this person, right? As kids are coming in to start. So I, I think there is some urgency to this. That doesn't mean lack of transparency, but it does, again, I guess, just mean trust in the process that diligence has been done. We've talked to a lot of districts who appoint one person to do this. They say, "Board president, go, go find an interim and bring them to us so we can hear about them and then we can approve them." I mean, that's how it's often done. So it's, it, it feels a little, I don't know, uncertain, but it, it sounds like we're actually doing quite a bit of diligence compared to a lot of folks in this position, looking for an interim on kind of a tight schedule.
Well, when we started, started this two weeks ago, correct?
No, we started this a good month ago. At the last meeting, we advised we were going to get out and start searching the names and do our due diligence and check with references and checking with our sources, see if they were even still available, if their timeframe matched. And that was kind of the vetting questions to see who was interested.
Well, and the, and, but we asked each one of the firms if they were feeling, willing to find an interim for us, even though we were doing the process, so I just...
However, by the time we hire them, let's say in a week, and it takes them time to post that, we have a huge problem with nobody transitioning with our superintendent. The timing is such that that interim, that, that search firm, by the time they are able to probably help us find an interim, if they even can, based on the experience we had, these are people that have retired from their job. They have chosen to, you know, move on. And so we had two say no right away, you've heard the whole spiel. You know what I mean? So I don't know that, unlike the superintendent search where people are still actively engaged in their profession and are anxious to come to a district like Forest Hills, these are people that are done, but say, "You know what? Maybe it would be really neat to go help this district." So there is not seemingly a huge pool of people floating around saying, "I can't wait to go back to be a superintendent at a tough time and help a district."
Right.
Right, so I don't, you know, even if they post the position, like we said, who knows who we're going to get? We've met a couple people that have, in addition to their own supplied references, we have our own sources that have all said, "This is a person that commands respect, that knows how to do the job, that will be a good fit for the district." You know, we all know anybody can walk into an interview and completely knock everybody's socks off until they get the first day in the job and you realize they were full of baloney. So we were hoping we could find that person that through our own experiences and connections is not full of baloney. So that, that was the idea, is to have, we have two people after all of our vetting. And we said, "If this, if things don't work out with Dr. Schubel's contract negotiations, we have one left, then we're going to have no choice but to go back to the drawing board and just have to deal with whatever comes after that." Does that make sense?
It does. I just wish we would have, I mean, we were hiring a firm to, you know, I don't...
Yep, we're hiring a firm.
I mean, we're going to go around in circles and stuff.
The firms all told us that these processes happen in parallel. The interim and the firm's search processes are two separate.
Right.
If we hadn't had one, and then we got a firm on board, they would help us, but they all advised us to be doing it.
But we would have hired them, and they would have been working for us, and they would have probably had more than six candidates come. I'm just saying, you know.
But they would not be finding six candidates that are here and available and want to work in Forest Hills and know Forest Hills. They'd be, you know, some guy from Iowa, that, or, you know, we, we don't know them and we don't have the relationships with the people around them to know that they are a good fit. And the, yeah, and the timeframe is, is very, very tight.
And I will tell you one more thing.
And I think between the two, it's much more important to slow the process down, to get the full superintendent, to get the right one. That's going to be a bigger search, it's going to be a wider search, we're not going to be only looking in West Michigan. We need somebody that's, can get up to speed very quickly for a one-year, for a one-year stint.
And maybe not even a year.
And maybe not even a year. If we, if we find some, through the process, that we get a great candidate that can start in January.
So be it.
That would be awesome. And I don't think Dr. Schubel will cry in her coffee that she has to leave early.
I understand that you're, you know, you have a window, and you'd ask me to make a commitment to stay through the end of the year if you don't find a candidate. But if you find one that's able to start second semester, there might be a little overlap where I can continue to help them navigate. And at that point, Dan's access to the district is just a month, a couple months out. So that's also a transition thing to think about. And I know there was a comment made about not scaring away candidates, you know, when you ha, when you select an interim. I think what the board is doing is saying, "Look, we have a retired person, they're not interested in being hired as a, a full-time superintendent." What they meant by that is when you hire someone from within, when you allow an assistant superintendent to step into the role as interim superintendent, that can scare candidates away. So I asked Mary immediately, is, "Are there internal candidates that you would be considering? Have any of them voiced an interest in being an interim? Because if they have, you know, how have you approached it?" She said, "At this point, we haven't." And I said, "Because if you do put one in there, the outside candidates already know they have a huge hurdle to get over, because someone from internal is already sitting in that seat." So it can cause a lot of issues. And so, good, bad, pros and cons, but I think in a district this size, I am extremely confident that you're going to get some top caliber superintendent candidates when you post. I can tell you right now that they're wait, they're waiting in the wings, waiting for you to post, so that they can get their resumes up to speed.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, I believe we have a motion on the table that has been seconded. Can we please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Nymeier?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
No.
Mrs. Vank?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon, yes. Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
We will, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schubel.
Yes, and thank you, Dr. Schubel. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item under superintendent search is the discussion and picking of the search firm for finding our next new full-time superintendent. Mary, would you like to kick us off on that?
Yeah, try and shift gears. We had the pleasure of interviewing four firms a couple weeks ago. I can't even keep track of time. I know a couple of us weren't able to attend, but I know that you were brought up to speed with whatever materials we were given and, and the basic rundown of the interview. So hoping that we could maybe go through that same exercise we did last time and sort of identify if somebody rose to the top and why. You know, I guess we could go through the motions of what are your priorities? I could lead with what mine are, but I don't want to do that to you all. But if you are comfortable with that, why, what group do you think would best serve our district? And a little bit of a why, so we can all sort of tap into that. Does that sound good?
That would be great.
Dr. Mashad, you want to start?
You want to start at the end?
Yeah.
Sure, a couple of the four, two kind of rose to the top for me, and then I landed on one, you know, that I personally, you know, had preference for after hearing all of them, seeing all of their paper metrics. The two were Hazard Young and MLI, the Michigan Leadership Institute. That's, that's one kind of Michigan-centric group and, and one more national group that has done some work in, in Michigan. Both just full of people with connections, full of, of people who know superintendents, who know the process of finding superintendents, who've placed a lot of superintendents. The one of, of the two that I felt most connected with in, in presentation would, would have been MLI. As, there's something to be said for the local nature, they're not limited to only looking in Michigan, it's not that we couldn't find a candidate elsewhere. A lot of their, when they post their positions, they're connected to a system that goes to multiple states, which, so we, the position would at least be known out there, you know, outside of our state. But they just, they're, they're full of superintendents, they run the Supes Academy. They, they just are very, to me, seems obviously very connected with the atmosphere in the superintendent circles. Had, again, had similar, you know, advice that people would line up to be applying for this job likely, offered us a lot of perspective insight that we didn't ask for either. We kind of asked them, "What's your timeline to get somebody in here by August?" And they said, "To be honest, we would suggest not doing that. We would suggest, you know, in our opinion, that a, a slower timeline might behoove you." So I don't know, they've got people all over the state, obviously, and the, the two local folks in southwest, West Michigan that, that we would be working with, you know, both retired superintendents with a lot of background. So I just felt, I'm most drawn myself to, to MLI. But again, I, I couldn't say anything bad either about Hazard Young, except they don't live in our backyard. And that's not really a bad thing, you know, that has a lot of pros with it too. So I kind of coalesced around the two of them.
Mallory?
Well, I have a couple questions before.
Sure.
Okay, so I unfortunately wasn't able to be there, and I was able to listen, but MLI and Ray, I couldn't hear at all on the recording, unfortunately. But on HIA, Hazard, Young Associates, I love her name. The cost day beyond fee above, that little, four days included, or are they going to do more included in their 19, 500? Do we, did we ask that?
Yep, I believe the four days was what was included in their base proposal.
Okay.
As far as coming to our campus and spending time with us and our community, and then we would pay extra for days beyond that.
It would be extra for days?
Right.
Is it?
2,500 a day.
2,500 a day? Okay.
I believe.
Yeah.
All right, so that was my one question. And then Dr. Serena Shivers or Shivers was, she does live in Michigan, but is a high Hazard associate. How would she be involved? Because I know the other two would be leading it, but did anybody get sense of how, because I love that she's in Michigan.
I don't, I don't feel like that was explained very well.
It really wasn't. And Ray did the same thing. They want to make sure, I think as more national suppliers, that they, we, they have a Michigan presence. They wanted to make sure that we knew they had somebody that could be here for us, be familiar with Michigan laws and Michigan trends and, and whatnot. So maybe our go-to, maybe she would be in charge of coming here a little more often to do some of the community work, simply because of location. We did not talk about that, though.
I liked that she was in Michigan, and they did reference, they've had a lot of Michigan searches in the past, maybe not in the very, very recent past, but they have done searches in Michigan.
They, they referenced that?
Yes, they, they had that original slide with like 25 Michigan districts. But we specifically asked them what they've done in Michigan in the last five years. And that was only Traverse City and Birmingham.
But they placed a lot in big districts in our Michigan, which was, I was happy to see that. I do like their national presence. I guess my only concern would be that extra cost. But I did like Hazard, their presentation best.
Okay.
From the two that I was able to watch. And I, I liked MLI from my first go-around, like before hearing them speak.
Yeah, and I think it was because they liked to stand up and move around a little bit, so they weren't right behind the podium, so the microphone didn't pick them up.
I actually heard your guys' questions either.
Oh, really? Mrs. DeBoer?
I have to agree with, with even CJ, with MLI. I actually first leaned toward Ray and Hazard on paper. And then, and then I did a lot of research and found a couple of incidents that if it came to visit us, it went probably the best and we'd have to, that's why I asked the question about partying ways, if, what the cost would be. So I was, which one ended up rebranding right after that. So I thought, you know, not for our community, that was just me, but also Hazard, the cost is, seemed like, I read some reviews of people, it was kind of an à la carte, and the money just kept going up and up, and then they ended up paying like $52,000, and, and like, that's way, way out of our budget. I didn't go with MASB just because we're with the association and we can tap into some resources for free. But what I really liked about MLI is the same, two retired superintendents, their presentation was not red. It was very much, like, I felt like we'd known them for a long time. And I just felt like if we're, you know, that trust issue is, we're going to be able to jump right over it right away with them. I just felt like they played off each other really well, completing each other's sentences or allowing the other one, "Hey, why don't you take this?" And they just seemed very, very present and very excited about doing what they loved to do. And now they get a chance to find a gem for us. And I just, I, I just really appreciated just the, the authenticity that came from both of them in the interview. So that's where I'm leaning towards.
Thank you. Mrs. Vank, would you like to share your thoughts?
I get to go last.
You get to go last? Okay, fine. How about Mrs. Koval?
Well, I have to share that I don't feel especially confident because of the meeting
because of the meeting and not being able to hear so well on the video. So, I, I can only go on my own research and my initial looking through the proposals because although I listened to the parts of the video I could hear, I wasn't necessarily impressed with what I heard. So, I'm just, just going to keep it simple. I'm going to defer to those who were there and able to hear all four interviews clearly. So, but otherwise, I was mostly in favor of Ray and Associates and MLI. So, Ray and Associates first for me, MLI second. And then, from what I could hear on the interview, I felt like MASB sort of dropped off my radar. Just, I don't know, the, the presentation itself just felt, I don't know, very memorized, very, because, I mean, they're just so used to being used, I think, so much in the state with so many of the districts here that I didn't feel the personalization that I was really hoping for. And I know with MLI, there was a real push to show, this is what we can do here, we can connect, we know this, we know your, your district. And I found Ray and Associates appealing for the particular Michigan districts they worked with that I thought were very close to what our district is. I mean, one of which is even officially considered a sister district to our school. So, I thought, well, I mean, their experience there would be apt in our particular district. So, those were my feelings on that. But again, I defer because the video was not, was not, you know, that's what I get. Last, last week of school, there are too many things that I have to do as a teacher to have been able to be there physically.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Tryon?
Yeah, I would say MLI would be my top choice, and HYA would be my second. I, I like that Holly used the word authenticity about MLI. I felt the same about them. It did not feel like a canned presentation. It just felt like they were having a very back-and-forth conversation with us. It was very open, it was very easy. And really, even before that, the fact that they, just last year, placed Rockford's superintendent, and that has gone very well and the community is so happy with that find, is huge for me. I also thought they had the best answer when I asked them, what sets us apart from Rockford in terms of how you would approach our search from theirs? I felt like they had a very strong intimate knowledge of Forest Hills. I also like that they do have nationwide interest in their postings. So, I feel like we're getting the same nationwide reach that we're getting with HYA, but at a lower price point and also with a better knowledge of Michigan and, and the unique things about being a superintendent in Michigan. They have the Supes Academy, which I like. I like that they offered the personality profile, if we wanted to do that. They have a passion for public education. I also, they're, they just got hired to do the Bloomfield Hills schools, and I think that's a very like, similar district to ours. And so, I think it bodes well for them that they also found a commonality with them. HYA, I think their materials are so impressive. They're so well organized. I think the resources that they put together for the board is incredible. I, I do think we'd get the same information, though, from MLI. It might not be in a board portal like HYA has, but I still think we'd get that same information. So, I would, I would say MLI would be my, my top choice. HYA would be my second choice.
Since Mrs. Vonck wants to go last.
Do you want me to go first? I don't have to. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. It seems like we all, I mean, it's good to hear, but it sounds like we were all sitting in the same room. Because we're all saying sort of the same things and have the same thoughts about a lot of the different ones. And I feel really, really badly that you two weren't able to be there and that the recording didn't come through. I was a little bit fearful of that when they were moving around.
You did the best you could. I mean, I really was, I still watched hours of a video.
So, yeah, I, for myself personally, the one that rose to the top for me was also MLI with Hazard in second place. I felt like the two gentlemen were really knowledgeable. They were really personable, that they were going to be, they, they seemed to be very energetic. They, they just were sort of excited and bouncing around at the prospect of being able to do this work. Like, they just felt excited. It didn't seem like, yes, I'm giving you this presentation because I want the job. I mean, obviously, they do, but they, I just got the feeling that they felt very invested and interested in it. I liked, there, some of the whiz-bang things of Hazard obviously sort of attracted me, all of the different data analytics that they put together. But in the end, you know, it's like, okay, that's, you know, a little bit of a shiny veneer, and you're right. I think we will get the same information, just maybe not as, you know, color-coded spreadsheets, you know, that Hazard might put together for us. And I think with Hazard, I think they would probably do a fine job. They're, you know, a very well-known firm, they're very well-respected. But it felt like both with Hazard and with Ray that they sort of brought in that one Michigan person that they have on their books to say that they have a Michigan person.
Yeah.
It didn't feel like that they were particularly going to be super-involved. And, so, yeah, so that, that didn't, I mean, I understood why they do it, that they did that, but it didn't sit as well with me. And having the two MLI reps, who are actually even more specifically, they're west Michigan reps, like, they, that this is the area of state that they work in. So, I, I've, I felt that they would probably be the one that would do the best job for us.
Okay, my turn. I love it. It sounds like we're all on the same page. I couldn't agree with any of you more. I also would put MLI first. I would have HY as my second choice. That did switch from the beginning because I loved the fact that HY had an innovative superintendent who thought outside the box and was revered by all of his peers. And that's exactly what we want in this district. But the fact that MLI and HYA both conducted their searches with retired superintendents, I think, will serve us very well. They understand what the job entails, and they understand, you know, what we're looking for and how to partner with us to do that. All the MLI things that were awesome is they have this Supes Academy, as you all may recall. They prepare superintendents to succeed in districts, and 25% of the sitting superintendents in the state have been through this academy. I like the fact, unlike some of the other groups, that they will help prep us for interviewing and the process, and they also will support us after the fact with sort of governance sessions and connecting with the, you know, the board with the new superintendent to make sure that we, for the first year, have access to them, so we are successful and, you know, hit the ground running. I also love the fact that if you're going to compare my two choices, which a lot of us had, it would be more cost-effective to go with MLI. They definitely are a price tag that would be more responsible for us to look at. And MLI had the most days attributed to spending time in our district, working with our community, and that was one of my big priorities, is I just want to make sure we have a huge district, and we have so many talented, loving, giving people that want to be heard, and we just want to make sure we do that for people. So, being that they had that above and beyond what everybody else was willing to offer. And finally, MLI and MASB do 90% of the searches in Michigan. So, the fact that we are following our peers and recognizing that they have something to bring to the table, I think that will serve us well. So, it sounds like we have a lot of common thoughts.
Anything else anybody wants to add to the discussion?
I guess the last detail that is coming to mind, that was on the forefront of my mind related to MLI, was their description of their community process, their community engagement. They all detail a very nice, you know, roster of meetings and surveys and onlines and in-persons. But again, these guys, the authentic word, you know, Holly, that you say is, it was evident there as well. I mean, these guys don't do it for, and they said, we, we don't need money for doing this. We're not like for, for-profit place superintendent place. We just love kids, and we just, we know Forest Hills community is, is very into, you know, being involved in who they're with. That's what we want. We're not telling you who to hire. We're just the vessel for your community and you guys to figure out who it is you want, and, and we just, we'll spend as much time as we need here, call as many people as we need to, to make sure that you're successful in that. So, again, all to the same point of authenticity and really understanding what we're looking for.
And as I recall, didn't MLI have nine days of time in the district? The other ones were more like four or five?
I like the fact that you felt like you were in the team huddle with them. Like, when they came in the room, you felt like, it was like the two coaches in the room, and like, okay, we're going to, we're going to take this team to, to victory for us. And I think that's what I left with, like, you know, there's a couple of other things, and I know CJ probably would agree that, you know, there's one firm really researched us and came up, you know? And I thought, ah, you know, like, that, that's hard. I think they researched us and came up and shook our hands and, you know, and went the extra stop, you know? But there was just something about, is it Rick?
Rick.
Yeah, that they were, it was just unbelievable. But you did, you just felt like you were at, at the game, you know, of choosing a superintendent, and, you know, we got the ball and, and we'll take you to, to, to the end zone. So, that's, I mean, and I think that's where that trust issue, and they'll be super transparent, you know, with everything that they want to do is bring the community and bring the community, and which was one of our top priorities for doing the search, so, yeah.
Well, it sounds like a lot of us felt very good about MLI. I know that you were not able to hear the presentation, and you had put Hazard perhaps as your first guest. Do you have any reservations or any questions about MLI that you would like to?
I don't, because when we first did this, I thought going with a Michigan-based because, like people have said, we are a destination district. And yes, they'll probably get different candidates, sure. But most likely, people who want to come here will come here. I think MLI can reach out locally and nationally, and that's what Hazard can do. But we are fiscally prudent if we go with the lower one that is local. So, yeah, I'm on board with MLI.
All right, well, I, and Kristin, you've said you feel pretty comfortable already, just is, since you couldn't hear them, is there any?
Well, I just don't feel like I necessarily, like, my opinion is, is counts for as much when I missed out on a chunk of the interview. So, I mean, I don't, I, I, yeah. I, I don't feel like it's fair for me to weigh in at the same level when I only got to really see half of the interview.
You have reservations about moving in that direction without?
Not really. I mean, yes, a little bit. I guess it's simply because of my experience, and, and I mean, I look at this as a bias, that I have been working in a district with, with a superintendent who was placed by MLI, and I don't feel like that was a good fit. And no surprise, the superintendent was not there very long. And really, I felt perhaps as many people did that this was just a stepping stone district to something else, and I would hate to see that happen in Forest Hills. But I'm also well-aware of the fact that it is a board who sets what they are looking for. And perhaps this is what the board wanted in that district, and they got what they wanted. That doesn't mean that such a thing would happen here. So, I just feel like, again, my, my opinion on, in two counts. I mean, yes, I thoroughly went through search firm proposals, and I, you know, investigated on my own. But missing out on half of the interview, I don't feel, makes me feel confident that my choice is fully informed. And secondly, I do have some very strong opinions about the most recent superintendent that was placed by MLI in the district in which I work. And although I did like what Rockford had to say, I have mentioned before that I, I like that, for example, Ray and Associates worked with Bloomfield Hills in Northville, which is, which is closer to Forest Hills and Forest Hills' needs as opposed to, I mean, Rockford's great, but it's, they have, they're different. So, I mean, those, I just wanted to express my thoughts on that. But I don't think, I mean, hearing where the board is going with this, that, that's, you know, that does that. And again, because I only was able to hear half of the interview video, that I feel like that opinion necessarily counts for much.
Well, and do you think that there would be a way? Because I, I understand that you work in a district where they did a search, and as an employee, you weren't particularly happy with that search. Do you feel that there, based on your knowledge of sort of what happened there, that you might have some insights that you could bring to make sure that something like that doesn't happen for us as a board as we move forward?
I think it's more on the board. The board is the one who's going to be determining who they choose. And just like any hiring of any person, you could have a phenomenal-looking candidate that, you know, might have a different, different vision once they get in there. I mean, things change, or you might wind up with someone who lasts for 17 years, 20-some years, like, I, that's why I'm, I'm just expressing. Like, I am sharing my feelings on this topic, but understanding that they really shouldn't weigh as heavily considering that there is some emotion attached to that and the experience from within of what that's like. And again, just because a superintendent doesn't end up staying in a district or that it necessarily goes well within the district means anything to the, the hiring process itself. I'd be excellent at placing superintendents. Sometimes they don't stay. That's simply put.
Is your superintendent going to Kalamazoo?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, at least it wasn't MLI that poached them, it was Ray.
Well, maybe, I wish, I wish him, by the way, the best of luck and hope that it's a better fit.
I also think it's interesting that
He's a lovely person.
Bloomfield did not choose to hire Ray a second time. They went with MLI this time.
Ah, all right.
I mean, whatever, whatever that's worth.
For whatever that's worth, yes. Well, and I did look, as I was looking at each, each school, as we got all those wonderful lists, and I was looking at the ones that did not go with their search firm again the second time. But in some cases, when I was looking into that, it, it didn't seem like, it might have had something more to do with the cost and other things as well. So, yeah, good point. We'll never know unless we really ask the ones who are right there, why did you go with a different firm?
All right, well, I think at this point, we're probably ready to move forward. So, do I have a motion to move forward with extending an offer to MLI to be our search firm?
Yes, I would motion that we move forward with extending an offer to MLI to be our search firm.
I'll second that.
Terrific. Could I please have a roll call vote?
Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Nymeier?
Yes.
Ms. DeBoer?
Yes.
Mrs. Vonck?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon, yes. Dr. Fossen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I know that this was a lot of work, especially Mrs. Vonck, who did a lot of work on that, so thank you very much. All of your efforts are deeply appreciated.
And I would like to thank all three of you that were on the committee. CJ and yourself as well, Kristin. That was a lot.
Thank you for that.
I agree.
Okay, we are going, coming up on the board communications. So, as we are preparing for board communications, this is the last call for comment cards. If anybody has not yet filled out a comment card that wants to, please do so now, because Elizabeth or Mark or somebody is going to be grabbing them and bringing them up for us. Does anyone have any board communications today? Yes?
I might just read this, because I'm getting tired. So, I had a chance to meet with Tamasha James and attend my first Equity Community Council. Thank you for passing that along. I was super, super excited to be on that council as a board liaison. For those of you that aren't familiar with the council, it's a group of parents and community members that meet to give feedback about this important work in our district. The work is important because we have gaps in our student achievement and learning. The data shows metrics between genders, races, abilities, language learners, et cetera. And there are clear gaps between specific areas. We are currently working on a plan to make sure that the staff, parents, and community understand that there are these gaps and why this work is being done to close those gaps. Finally, the end goal is belonging. Students who feel that their authentic selves belong in schools, in the school, they will want to not only be in school, but will achieve at high levels, so their authentic selves. And so that's what the idea of belonging is and part of the work that we will do.
Terrific, thank you. Are there any other board communications? No? Okay. Well, then we will move along to public comments. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like a follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. If I call your name and you have changed your mind about speaking, you may just say pass. Thank you so much. All right. Andy Holmgreave.
Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the bus drivers. I couldn't make it here because I was actually at David Lyon's retirement party, so lots of retirement going on, but I wanted to give you a perspective from, I consider myself a community-based bus driver. So about a year ago, the district put out and said, hey, if you can commit to four hours a month, they will train you to be a CDL Class B bus driver. So I took that challenge and I got it, I can do four hours a month, I can find that. When I got into the training, I realized, I can't do four hours a month, that's insane. Like, every, a new route every time, I need to have the same route and learn it, there's so much that goes into it. Process, protocols, safety, getting to know the kids. So I actually convinced my wife to let me drive every morning. So I have the privilege of being a part of that team and for the last year, learning from them, and I wanted to say this to them, that it has been a true privilege to be a part of that. I think what I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and it's not like I've been saying it and it hasn't been heard, but I do think it's important to get a perspective from someone like myself, who, oh, I didn't say, 1830 Hillsborough is my address, sorry, I totally just jumped in. I have four kids in the district, well, now three, my son just graduated from Central. So this is a perspective from a, from a community member. Perseverance is, is, is one adjective to describe the bus drivers, and what, what goes on every day to make it work, there's so much more than I realized until I actually got behind the wheel. And what I want to bring to your attention is, we have to think about this differently. You've got a bunch of people retiring, you've got bus drivers that are retiring, it's not the, we don't go back and do the same thing that we've been doing. We have to think about this differently, and it matters. It's the first classroom of the day and the last classroom of the day, and to make this impact for these kids is real. And I didn't realize how impactful it was until I actually got behind the driver's seat and started driving. It matters, and the complexity of what these kids deal with every day is getting more and more. So they, they need engaged people to greet them and get them excited about going to school, and make them feel safe about going to school. So I just wanted to share that with you and say, we've got to think about this differently and think creatively, because it's a really important part of the school day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm recognizing a name here that is actually a student, and it was put in the student here, so I'm going to switch things up here and go with Ellie McDowell.
My name is Ellie McDowell. My address is 532-801. I'm a recent graduate from Forest Hills Central. I was made aware that an email was sent out assuring staff members that GLI would be sticking around, but I'm worried about what's going to happen to it. I've had district-wide opportunities in the GLI program since I was eight, and in that 10 or so years, I've participated in multiple workshops, from being a student to a small group leader, and the last two years, a workshop student leader. I also got the chance this past year to participate in the Institute for Equity and Inclusion, or, sorry, the Institute for Healing Racism. Those things alone have taught me more than a lot of my teachers have. If I hadn't been part of these things and my family hadn't been in teaching me, my, teaching me equity and inclusion, I wouldn't be the person I am. These things should be tools everyone in the district should learn and nothing less. Part of what GLI has done for me is inspire me to become a teacher. This fall, I will be attending college for secondary English education. I'm anxious to find ways to include GLI in future classrooms. My goal as a teacher is to make the difference in lives of my students. I want to be a teacher because I think teachers have that great opportunity to change a life, and that is the one thing I want to do. GLI has been so important to my education, and I'm becoming who I am. Not only have I made friends like Grant, who have my back and don't let me do things like this alone, but I have, but it has made me into a person who actively seeks ways to make me, my world a better place. GLI is an important part of my life and should be something that faculty, students, and families in this district should be able to participate in. Things like workshops have become something we look forward to, because seeing our younger students learn about the world around them in ways that is less about the history and more about the people they see daily is so amazing, and it's something that these kids remember. It's important for people to understand that it's not just the street, people are living things like racism and discrimination every day. These workshops and the institute are important for staff and families, too. I will never forget the comments Grant and I got at our institute from parents and teachers in the district. We got comments about how some of the adults in the room were amazed at how advanced we were in these topics, and how often we see things like racism. These institutes are amazing opportunities for parents and teachers to see through the lens of Forest Hills students and understand fully what goes on in our daily lives. So Board of Education, we are asking you to not only keep the GLI program, but to make it the best it can possibly be. With the retirement of Ms. Manera and Mr. Beam, we ask that you allow your ambassadors from high schools in the district to maintain, help maintain the GLI program and to encourage its growth. We should strive to be the best district we can be, and that means teaching everyone how to be inclusive. This education has been life-changing for me, and it scares me that my sisters and the kids who come after them may not get to experience it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie.
Grant Dean?
Sorry.
All right. Here we go. Good evening, board members and attendants of the meeting. My name is Grant Dean. My address is 2142 Shalapoint Drive, and I'm a newly graduated student at Forest Hills Northern High School. In my 12 years as a Husky, I can confidently say that although my 12 years as a Husky have prepared me to further my education past high school at Michigan State University next fall, GLI has prepared me to have serious and heavily needed conversations from a very young age. The teachings I've received from GLI have shown me how to be accepting, emotionally intelligent, and have the important conversations that I wasn't able to have in a classroom about society today and how we can correct the wrongs together. I'm so grateful that I've been able to receive such an education from GLI since third grade. Even though I don't want to go into education, working with kids throughout my high school experience has been one of my highlights. I'm currently wearing my Game Changers shirt, which is a mentorship program on the northern side of the district. I was lucky to speak highly of Game Changers at the last meeting of the last school year, and I'm ecstatic to be able to do the same thing for another program that I hold so dearly to my heart, which is GLI. Like I've said earlier, I've been in GLI since I was in third grade. Ellie and I actually did our first workshop together, and we also had a sixth-grade workshop. And then by the time we were high schoolers, we were leading workshops for kids and the second generation. It is so exciting to be able to help begin the change that needs to be seen in society today. The kids are so open to learn how to be accepting of all, and one thing we preach in GLI is embracing each other's differences, which the kids are so incredible at. Although it is, although it is vital for these lessons to begin to be taught from a young age, anyone at any age can learn how to be accepting and welcoming to anyone regardless of their background. The friends I've made, connections that have been formed, and lessons learned have made me who I am today. It is my hope that students that come after me will be able to experience GLI as well in all of its glory and not minimized. So Ellie talked about how she wants to use her lessons learned in GLI for her career, so I'll do that. Next year, I will be going to James Madison College at Michigan State University, and my majors will be comparative cultures and politics as well as Chinese, because I am in the Chinese immersion program, and I plan to use the things that I've learned and the pillars that have been built to go into politics and make the changes that need to be seen. And I know I'll be able to do it, because I was able to have these serious conversations from a young age. And like Ellie said, this is why we're seen as so advanced for our age, talking about things that most adults can't comprehend because of the lessons that we learned in GLI. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Doyle? Oh, Paul Doyle?
Paul Doyle, you have my address on file as a staff member. I want to begin by saying thank you, Dan. You've been an amazing leader, and as someone that's been watching for 17 years and walking along in some ways, one of the things that I feel that you've done really well is give those of us in the community agency the ability to weigh in and try to work together to solve problems. And so to the board, that would be one of the things that I would really encourage you to look for, is new superintendent candidates that are going to activate the positive energy within the community. Secondly, I'm not sure how you selected candidates for the Julie Booley Award, Judy Booley Award, but it was 100% deserved. The men and the women of the Transportation Department are remarkable. I have no doubt that there are many remarkable people in this district, but transportation is something special. They get up and they do it every day. One thing I do have to say, however, is that that award, I believe, was earned over the last two years or more. And over the last two years, that department would not have functioned without Agol Saganic. And for reasons that are unclear to me, she was not here tonight. I want to make sure she's recognized for just how much she gave and how hard she worked. Finally, using a little bit of a bus driver's metaphor, we still have a road ahead of us. There's a lot of work left to be done. I really look forward to whoever is going to be the new leader of the district as they get onboard our district bus. There're going to be a lot of personalities on that bus, I know. We see them here tonight, we see them every day. And hopefully, we get to the destination together. We are woefully short right now, in spite of, you know, efforts for two years, at least the two years I've been involved. So as we face this summer, my hope is that the board finds ways to do some things that sets up for a better September, August, September school start, because as it stands right now, it's going to be a real challenge. We may not be going forward, we may be a little bit in reverse. So please, find ways to support the Transportation Department, continue that work, and thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Boone? Emily Van Root?
Not here.
Mike Loyks?
Doug Lee?
And Dan, I want to personally thank you for the time that you have here. We're not always at odds, and this community, I just want to take you back history. My name is Doug Lee. I had four kids that are alumni here, and they had, most of them had an amazing education, very similar to CJ, who was a product of an educational exceptionalism, at a time when that existed in Forest Hills. 18 years ago, when Dr. Washburn retired and we transitioned on, I just want to share with you some things about Forest Hills, which made it exceptional. The vast majority of student body and teachers were inclusive. Racism was almost nonexistent. We did not have a diversity, equity, and inclusion department, and school board meetings were virtually non-attended. Okay? We were in the top 10 in education ranking for math and science of 11th graders. Our student body was growing. Churches, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and other organizations shared the facility with FHPS. Me and my dad, breakfasts were 100% participated among Pine Ridge Parents. Pine Ridge Carnival is one of the students' bodies' favorite activity. We had guidance counselors instead of mental health counselors. These were some of Dr. Les Washburn's legacy, his passion for education. But it wasn't the passion of Dr. Washburn alone, it was the commitment to the Board of Education for academics. That was the theme when CJ went to school. He graduated from a top school because academics was top on its list. This is what we have today. We have a diversity, equity, and inclusion department. We've hired more mental health counselors than I think new teachers. The community is divided, the board of education meetings are packed with concerned parents, grandparents, and taxpayers. Racism is prevalent, and all, all in the name of systemic racism. We have busing and custodial crisis are norm. We've experienced a two-year learning loss based upon implementing factless COVID protocols. Student body is decreasing every year, and not because we're having less babies. State science and math ranking of 11th is greatly declined. This is where we're at today. It's not just Dan's, it's everybody's responsibility. The board sets the direction for the legacy of the school, not the superintendent. Okay? I quit blaming Dan a long time ago, when the direction of the school board itself did not know the direction it wanted for its schools. You guys rubber stamp everything, you need to decide for yourself, do you want to give an excellent exceptionalism education to the student body, or are we just going to continue down this path and ranking is still going to decrease? The reason we have racism, because you bring racism into it. When you talk about it, you create it. My kids did not grow up in Forest Hills where there was racism. It exists now, because you created it, putting in divisive programs.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Nick Prill?
My name is Nick Prill, and you have my address on file. Madam President, I would like to call your attention back to the March meeting just three short months ago, where you guys adopted the policy for the comment cards. There was some great conversation before that motion passed about making sure at the end of every, every public comment session, that there was an opportunity for anybody who didn't sign up to still have that opportunity to speak. The board members voted under that pretense. Now let's fast forward to last month's meeting, where you, single-handedly, decided to not only silence community members, but also silence fellow board members when you called for an adjournment. The policy hasn't even formally been adopted by this body. From your meeting packet for that March meeting, it states that if it's approved, the district will work with council to amend the policy 5204, or 2504. Only then would it come to the board for final approval. Madam President, you are not a tyrant. You are better than this. You have violated your oath of office by, by single-handedly shutting down the First Amendment rights of people that wanted to speak, and you've also violated your code of ethics to this board. I call on you to resign from your presidency effective immediately and to elect a new president to serve this school board. If the rest of you are okay with suppression of free speech, violation of constitutional rights, then sit there and be silent. If you're not okay with that, and you stand up for free speech, and you love this country and the flag that you pledged your allegiance to earlier tonight, if this president doesn't resign from her position as president, I challenge one of you to have the courage to make a motion to vacate the seat and to elect a new president who will take their office, oath of office, and code of conduct seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Darmcheck?
I have extras of these if anyone's interested after I'm done.
Tom Darmcheck, my address is on file with the board. So I spent a little time today on the Michigan SchoolData.org website. That is the official Michigan State website for That is the official Michigan state website for metrics on school districts. And I focused in, obviously, on Forest Hills. And unfortunately, they don't go back farther than five years, but I do have data going back five years. The first slide you're going to see is a pupil count in Forest Hills School District. In the last five years, it's dropped from 9,829 to 9,317, a drop of over 500 students. The next slide is an interesting one. It's, I labeled it "student flows." It's resident pupils, people who are in this district, who are leaving Forest Hills School District. Since 2018, that number was 459. This last year, it was 521. So more and more students are leaving this district to go elsewhere or leaving it entirely. Non-resident pupils coming in has been stable around 951 in 2018, and in 2022, it was 928. So that's actually backfilling the students that were losing out of this district who actually live here. And that's your school of choice. The third slide is a five-year budget trend line for Forest Hills Public Schools. In 2018, the budget was $105,855,222. In 2022, it was $123,843,037. In light of the fact that this district is losing students continuously and has for the last dozen years, that seems astonishing to me that we've had such a huge increase in the budget expenditures. One of those reasons is probably the next slide, which is non-instructional staff count. In 2010, there were 642 employees who were non-instructional, non-teachers. This last year, it was 987. That's an enormous jump in non-teachers who are employed by this district. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that school bus drivers were included in that count. And finally, last slide is SAT scores, 11th grade, which is comparable across the state. In 2015, the Met's college suitable score was 67.5 in this school district. That has dropped to 60.1 in 2122 school year. So we've seen decreasing scores. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Dymczak. Cherry Talsma? Cherry Talsma? Greg King? Holly Rad, Raid?
Hi, my name is Holly, and my address is 4502 Orchard Creek Court. And my husband and I have three teenage daughters, and they go to Forest Hills Northern. And there's maybe just like a few issues that I think could be looked into. And yes, I have talked to people about them before. So, one is parking at Northern, the bowl. Like, I don't feel it's safe. It's just, it's down. And like, a majority of kids are parking up by the school. And then there's a small percentage that are unlucky and were not drawn that park lower. And they come in at all hours, kids. You know, it's dark allotted a year. And it's just not safe having them, it's not about the walking. Or, you know, that it's not cool to be in the bowl, because it's not cool. But it's safety. Like, I just, I don't feel safe having my teenage daughters park there and walk up on their own. Another issue would be bathrooms. At least for girls at Northern, none of my girls will use the bathroom unless it's a dire emergency. Bathrooms should be clean, they should be fully stocked with paper products. And they're for refreshing or using the toilet, not for vaping, not for drugs, not for smoking, and not for hanging out. But none of my girls want to use the bathroom at Northern, so I think that's a serious problem. And then lastly, I just want to say, from the time my oldest husband at Northern to now my youngest, I have seen a great change in just encouraging kids to excel at what they're good at. Some kids are good at music, some are good at theater, some are super academic. And I have seen a lot of opportunities taken away in the hopes of, I'm not sure what. But I just, I want to encourage you to let kids be who God made them to be. And just encourage them to excel when they can and not take those opportunities away, whether it's advanced classes or different things like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Vincent Munner?
My presentation this evening is rated R for violence. If there's any children still awake at this point, I recommend that they leave. And my speech reflects my personal opinions only. Last month, I highlighted the irresponsible inclusion of the book Refugee by Alan Graz at an elementary school scholastic book fair. Let me remind you of what was being peddled to children nine years and younger. They would choose someone to drown every night. They would tie his ankles together and his hands behind his back, and they would hang him upside down with his head in a barrel. Then they would fill the barrel with water slowly, so they could enjoy the panic, so they could laugh. He would thrash around and breathe water until he drowned. I made an appeal to you after this to partner with me in curating the school library and third-party partnerships. On my comment card, I invite a further dialogue, but to this date, regarding this topic, no one has taken the initiative. My concern is unaddressed, and here I am. So I conducted my own investigation. This book is not just being peddled at scholastic book fairs. It is in all the high schools, all the middle schools, Northern Trails, Central Woodlands, Knapp Forest, and Orchard View, two elementary schools. Realize that this book contains headshot murders, corpse looting, and a woman forced to choose whichever child dies. Your seven-year-old may ask you to define dismemberment or floggings. Our children spend their days training their nascent abilities. Our youngest dream big, with an appetite for learning. A school library is a nexus of knowledge where children should access curated subset of books. An effective school book is inspirational rather than demotivating. It tactfully protects childhood joy while shaping upstanding citizen conduct through positive example. Purposeful growth imparts values and knowledge that gently reveal the greater reality, strengthening our children to combat worldly evil rather than overwhelming them with it. Refugee is not a bad book. It has an important message to tell. But to expose a little child to this without first equipping them with the armor of context and the shield of nuance is to maliciously psychologically assault a helpless innocent. This book has no place in an elementary school. Understanding that, critically reviewing and reclassifying school books is not banning, it is good stewardship. Administration claims that this is a daunting task, so I make you the same offers that others have made. Partner with me, partner with us. I can raise a cohort of community members to critically assess all the books in the district. But will you take the first step towards temperance and shake my hand? I certainly hope that you have the fortitude to do so. Good day.
Thank you. Ruchi Tamboli? Ruchi, okay. Scott Skank?
Good evening. My name is Scott Skank, and I am the antithesis of the person that Kristen wants to hear from today. I am the father of five children, all of which have been through or are still in the Forest Hills Public School system. I have over 60 student years of experience with the Forest Hills Public School system. I became more interested in the goings-on as I saw discordance between what was reported and what my children experienced. I can say that fundamentally, I have learned more from public comment than I have from any newsletter, administrator, or teacher. I very much appreciate the public comment section. The fact that we have 40 community members still here four hours after the meeting started speaks to the interest level. And the fact that we are being pushed back with the comment cards, I just have a visceral reaction to. I created a comment card walking in without having anything to say, because I wanted to reserve my right to say it should something come up. With Kristen's comments at the beginning of this meeting, I knew what I had to talk about. The fact that she states an opinion, that the process is working well, is that, and it's an opinion, is not a fact. This is the reason I bring it up today. The fact that we state opinions as though they are facts is the reason for the discordance that we have between the reports from various entities and our students. I asked the board to reconsider the use of the comment card, to let people comment freely if something were to come up in the public comment section, to allow others to comment as well. I think it's fundamental. I can cite one example here today, since I have a minute and 18 seconds. The bathrooms. My children won't go in a Forest Hills public bathroom. They're scared to. The vaping, the drugs, they tell me about it every day. We don't hear about it, but here are another parents bringing it to your attention. It's a common thing that we know about. We hear about it in the public comment section. To diminish the comment section, to push it off to the end of the meeting, I think is a disservice to the community and hinders transparency that the board says they want to achieve. Thank you.
Mandy White? Mandy White?
I came to speak last month and unfortunately was unable to because I didn't turn in a card. But again, I want to bring up the fact that our Transportation Department is in need of our help. Thank you to the Transportation gentlemen that had come up and spoke as well. We, as a community, need to do something to make sure that we have fulfilled what we need to fulfill to get these kids to and from school. It's a lot of pressure on our drivers. We need to relieve some of that pressure from them. You have office staff and you have mechanics driving. We need to do better as a community. As a community, we also have tried making sure that our bus drivers know that we are there for them, we hear them, we support them. On Wednesday, we will be giving them a luncheon, so I highly encourage you to please stop by at around noon, if you can make it, to also let them know that you hear and see them and that you are behind them and willing to step in and do something to fix the issue that we're gonna be facing. We are at a shortage, as you hear, and it's only gonna get worse. Many of the drivers are retired. We need to do something to bring in new candidates, new people who are gonna stay. You have employees that have been here 20, 30 years, they're leaving, they're done. We need to do something, we need to work together to fix the issue. And also, just a comment to you, Dr. Fosson, that you had started saying that the comment cards and public speaking seem to be of certain criteria. I hope those comments are your own personal comments and not the comments of the entire board, because that's pretty, as a community member and staff, or students in the district, it's pretty disheartening to hear that you're trying to tell me what I can and cannot speak about. And if I feel that I need to speak, you have told me basically I can't because it's not under certain criteria. So I really hope that you reconsider what you said and also that the board does not follow what you had said on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Stacy? Jackie Stacy? Tom N? I say the second card there accidentally, okay. Jarrett Jacobowski?
Jarrett Jacobowski? 19, that's one niner, White Hills, Two Words, Avenue Northeast, Grand Rapids Township, Michigan. ZIP Code 49546-1310. Date of birth, 12/19/1946. Phone, we're in the book. My contact info fully complied with the board's rules and, I suppose, for your dim-witted doxers who love all the woke madness being force-fed our kids. Anyway, it said, "Silence is golden and silence can speak volumes." That said, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You're insisting, last month, on your rule of silence, "No further comments," spoke volumes as to what you are actually hearing, what you want to hear. And if it's not you're being applauded, you really prefer silence. Concerned citizens with family and job demands that conflict with your arbitrary comment card rules, well, no public voice for you. Shut up, go home. People, rules should be implemented for the best interest of all the people, not to indulge paranoid whims and control obsessions of the banger of the holy gavel. So what will it take to get you to truly listen to hear? I suggest you all educate, summer school yourselves. Here's a great beach book, The Marxification of Education by John Lindsay. It explains why so many naive, compliant cogs in the education machine, especially those younger than their mid-40s, fanatically propagate the woke leftist lunacy swirling all around us and forced into our children at school. The truth is out there. By the way, not too, too long after we gather again at Summer Zen, you will hear a message that will be heard beyond our cozy little meetings here and probably well beyond our district too. So stay tuned, to be continued. And oh yeah, at the beach, don't forget the sunscreen. But do not screen yourselves from the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Vandercheck?
Robin Vandercheck, Goodwood. I am here because I have read cover-to-cover the Forest Hills Public School Library Book, Push. I don't know if any of the board has read it cover-to-cover. So at the last board meeting, I brought a 10-page, double-sided copy listing by page number where much of the inappropriate and objectionable content could be found. My hope being that each member would see for themselves the controversial race commentary, the excessive profanity and derogatory terms used to address teachers, administrators, and counselors, the violence, including murder and self-harm, alongside incest, molestation, and violent rape. As I was instructed to hand this material over to the secretary only, I'm uncertain as to whether all members of the board reviewed the paperwork. The bottom line is that I truly feel we owe our students an apology, sending them to kindergarten where they learn to interact with their teacher and fellow students using kindness and respect, and then going on to high school, where they are able to go to their library shelf and be introduced to an adult removing a child's diaper to insert his private part into the now naked young child's private part. Excessive amounts of racial and ethnic slurs, including many references to niggers, coons, crackers, peckerwoods, white cunt boxes, spics, yellow bitches, et cetera. I don't know what the purpose is to keep a book reflecting so offensively on many races on the shelves. I've also, since the last meeting, reached out to three-degree professionals, therapists, and counselors, one of whom is actually certified by the American Association of Sexuality Educators, Counselors, and Therapists. This certification involves having extensive additional training, working with those who've been experiencing sexual trauma. All three professionals, after review, came to the same conclusion that Push does not belong on high school library shelves. that Push does not belong on high school library shelves. So I take these recommendations from these experts in their field seriously. And as a result, I'm turning in my completed book reconsideration request form for the removal of Push. Thank you.
Thank you. Etta Boufidel?
Good evening. My name is Etta Boufidel, and I live on Scarborough Drive in Ada. Dan, one of your 17,000-plus graduates was our son Zachary, who is now living in Florida. I have a few thoughts I want to share with the board tied to hiring a new superintendent and Dr. Schubel. In my opinion, the board should seek a superintendent with a significant understanding about technology in our society and its connections to curriculum. I want to focus on two issues related to technology, and these may seem to be at odds with each other, but they're both important. First, while some of these public forums raise their concerns about the possible effects of certain books on our kids, we should really be focusing on something our kids spend a lot of time with and something that is harder for us to try to control. I want a new superintendent who understands that we cannot take for granted the effects of social media on our kids. Recently, U.S. Surgeon General Murthy spoke about this matter. Here's a quote from an interview with NPR. Quote, "Most kids tell me three things about social media. It makes them feel worse about themselves or worse about their friendships, and they can't get off it." The bottom line is we do not have enough evidence to conclude that social media is, in fact, sufficiently safe for our kids. And it's not even the risk of depression and anxiety symptoms. But we find that nearly half of adolescents are saying that social media makes them feel worse about their body image." Unquote. And to add to this, who knows what kind of impacts would come from the implementations of artificial intelligence that have been in the news lately. The second issue is something that I brought to the attention of the board last year. There are plans afoot to have West Michigan become a regional tech, technology hub by 2030. I'm here today to report that this discussion of these plans is getting louder. At the Mackinac Policy Conference last week, Richard Florida spoke of Michigan's Great Inflection, a strategy for the age of technology and talent, discussing a once-in-a-century economic transformation of the state revolving around tech. I was on a call last week with the state government's Talent Action Team's Semiconductors Higher Education Initiative. They are setting up new college scholarships as well as programs to promote career awareness in the K-12 schools. And the right place in Grand Rapids keeps pointing to the Kentwood School Districts being a part of this great project. I don't hear much about Forest Hills. The new superintendent must get Forest Hills more involved in these initiatives. And at the same time, we also need to do more to help kids learn how to handle social media and technology. Thank you.
Thank you. David Martin?
David Martin, 2715 Snow Avenue. I resonate greatly with the comments about, especially Nick Prill's comments because I was that guy last month. A very important topic was brought up, and I had something to say, but I was forbidden to say it. I attend about half the meetings. I probably speak at about half of them. Most of the time, it's something that I hear from the board. So I really don't have a prepared speech, and maybe I would spare you listening to me. Last fall, I believe it was December, I attended a meeting, and as was noted, it was brought up. Hey, it works really great in Lowell to have people sign up ahead of time, so then we know their contact information. People on the board said, "We need to have an accommodation for people who don't sign in ahead of time, that learn something at the meeting that they want to talk about." And the chairperson said, "I'm sure we can accommodate that." Well, the meeting, the next meeting I came to was last month. I attended and didn't really expect to speak, but I heard something about the Chinese immersion program, and I had something very interesting to say. And I looked at my phone, and I had a very well-composed thing. And I went back and I got a card, and I filled my name out, and I filled in all the information. There was never a call for cards like there was tonight. So at the, at the end of the people who had pre-registered, I held my card up and I said, "I would like to speak, here is my information." And the chairperson gavelled the meeting shut. Now, tonight, you give people an opportunity to submit the, 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 um, the comment cards in the midst of the meeting. That was not done a month ago. Are you going to get it together and get a policy in place? You never called for comment cards during the meeting. I would have submitted it. I was told that I needed to have my comment card submitted in the basket prior to the beginning of the meeting if I was intended to speak. What the heck is the policy? Would you please tell us and put it on the website so we know what we're doing? Otherwise, I'm going to be standing out at every meeting and telling everyone to fill out a comment card just in case you want to talk. And you're going to be spending 15 minutes going through comments.
Thank you.
No one here, no one here.
Thank you. That is the end of the public comments. We are up to closing remarks. Did you fill out a card over in the other room? That is for that other meeting.
You adjourned the item for this meeting.
That, that meeting will be... That meeting was recessed so that we could hold this meeting. We are finishing this meeting, and then we will reconvene that meeting. I have those comment cards right here. Do we have any closing remarks?
You move the meeting from there over to here, and it's going to take six minutes to finish.
We have to go, we have to finish this meeting in order to then open up the other meeting again. We have to, procedurally, we have to get through this meeting.
Yeah, you adjourned that meeting. You shouldn't even pull that item with this meeting. You're interrupting the meeting law.
We, we recessed the other meeting because we had to get in to start this meeting. Now we have to conduct this entire meeting. And then as soon as this one is done, we will reconvene the one that we recessed, and we will get to those comment cards at that time.
My only closing remarks are, I hope everyone has a great summer. Continue to be kind, everyone. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Education? Do I have a second? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.